Good evening, or good afternoon, everyone. Good early evening. We are going to begin our budget hearing. This is the first of several. So visit cityofsouthfulton.gov to find out when and where the next budget and millage rate hearings will be happening, coming to a city facility near you. And we're going to talk about some money right now. I see some people are ready to do that. And without further ado, Mr. Clerk, would you please sound the roll?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to correct the record for one thing. We're not having a hearing this morning. It's just the, this afternoon, the presentation by the city manager. But the first budget hearing will be on August 22nd, and the city manager will enumerate those times and dates in her presentation. With that, this is the roll call. For the August 2nd, 2:00 p.m., special call meeting. The Honorable Captain Ephraim, District 1.
Present.
The Honorable Kamalitha Gums, District 2.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Zee Willis, District 3.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District 4.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves is not present at this time. The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District 6.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda Pritchett, District 7, is not present at this time. And the Honorable Mayor Kalik.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a call.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
First item, this is the presentation of the FY 2024 budget. Will be presented by Sharon D. Subenan, interim city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to our citizens, our residents, our staff, Team South Fulton. This afternoon, I am going to be presenting the city manager's proposed budget, which is my compilation of your input, staff's requests, things that we have talked about over the last three months and six days that I've been here as your interim city manager. And so we have a PowerPoint presentation. Going against my usual grain, today I will not be bright, brief, and begone. Today I will take more time, as this is, I believe, one of the most important policy decisions that you make on an annual basis. And so on the screen, we'd like to start with a reminder of your vision and mission statement. Sometimes people forget that there is a vision and a mission statement that you, as a council, adopted. Next slide, please. And so the budget this year, as every year, sets the vision of the council. It should reflect the needs of the community, which I believe it does.
Yes.
You asking me to stop? Hold up.
It's an over-sentence. There it is.
So the budget provides a 12-month roadmap for the staff to follow. The theme of our budget this year is future-focused. The city has been in existence for six years. You've overcome many challenges. Many challenges still lay ahead. The windshield is large and in front of us, looking forward. The rearview mirror is small, provides perspective, but my value proposition for all of you today is being future-focused, as opposed to constantly dwelling on our past. So how did we get here? We started with the budget kickoff for every department. I asked the departments to consider what they needed versus what they wanted. We asked them to put in their base budget in the system, the admin system, and I asked them to identify their new initiatives separately. And those totaled $63 million, as you're probably not surprised to hear. And then we met in a mini-budget retreat with all of you, and you provided me with many of your priorities, which was another $58 million, which I'm sure you're also not surprised to hear. And so I shared with you and shared with staff, you can have anything, but you can't have everything. And so what I've done is to incorporate as much as I could fit in the budget of your priorities and staff's priorities, and those things that I think are desperately needed in our community. So the base budget includes no increase in the millage rate, expenditures for continuing operations, annualization of expenses such as capital leases, increased costs that we don't have any control over. An example of that is increased cost of animal services, which are provided to us by Fulton County, which went up significantly for next year from $890,000 to $2.3 million. It also includes a 3% cost of living adjustment for all city employees. The new initiatives of the future-focused budget are in five categories: quality of life, public safety, workforce development, future city facilities, and planning for the future. Next slide, please. Our total budget this year is $206.4 million in three categories. $129 million, 63% in our operating budget with the new initiatives. $53 million in other funds, special funds, and then $23 million in capital projects and other one-time expenses. Next slide. And just for everybody who's in the audience, we will post the PowerPoint right after this meeting, so that you'll have access to it if you need it. Our general fund operating budget with new initiatives is $129 million, general fund capital and one-time, $23, and other funds, $53. Next slide. And so we wanted to break this down for you, so you can see the year-over-year comparison. One really important thing to make you aware of is, in lieu of raising any taxes for certain one-time expenditures and capital expenditures, I am suggesting that you use some accumulated fund balance in order to fund some of these one-time expenditures and capital expenditures, which are non-recurring. So you'll see the difference year-over-year by major category, and an increase for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. So this is a very busy slide, but this helps you to see the various different types of revenue that we have. A lot of times, there's the thought process that property taxes pay for everything, and while property taxes are, of course, a large percentage of our budget, there are numerous other categories that we receive revenue from, that they do, obviously do come from taxpayers and from residents and visitors to our community. But one area that we're seeing a very large increase, as you can see on this slide, is from local option sales tax. And in most jurisdictions, local option sales tax is generally about 50% paid for people who don't live in your city, which is why it's a pretty, it's a regressive tax, but it's a pretty equitable tax, because those people who come into our city use our roads, use our facilities, and so they pay the tax through their sales tax when they purchase goods and services in our community. Special revenue is T-SPLAS, that's a big example. We're also seeing an increase in T-SPLAS, transportation, special purpose local option sales tax, which is also paid for by both residents and visitors. And you'll see some of these other funds, the pedestrian safety funds from traffic cameras in school zones. Those are being dedicated to police and pedestrian safety in this year's budget. And you'll see several other funding sources, to include this year, the solid waste fund. And we are also carrying over the ARPA funding from last year to this year, because we are on a short timetable now to either spend or appropriate that funding. Next slide, please. And so here's just another description, a summary of our revenue sources. Special revenue accounts for 13%, general fund 63%. I'll spend the majority of my time talking about general fund today, as the others are somewhat self-explanatory. And at the bottom of this slide, you'll see my request or my recommendation that we appropriate $23 million in fund balance for this year's budget. Next slide. And this again is more detail, helping you to see line by line where the funding is coming from. So that's where the money comes from, essentially. Next slide, please. So I thought this was a good opportunity for us to talk about exemptions. Some of you on this council have asked numerous times, what is the value of exemptions, homestead exemptions? And most of you are aware that 40% of the value of your property is deducted before your property tax bill is accounted for, but then there are exemptions. Those of us who live in our own home are able to get a homestead exemption for being a homeowner who lives in your property. Next slide. But there are several other exemptions. And these exemptions, some of them are by state law, some of them are adopted, many of them you carried over from Fulton County and have sustained the exemptions as you're in your role as a city. And so tomorrow, and the following Wednesday, we will have millage hearings, and there'll be considerably more conversation about the millage. But I wanted to highlight here that there's $32 million worth of exemptions that are taken off the top of the property tax digest, and so there's great value in these exemptions that you provide and have supported for our community. Next slide. So general fund revenue, again, just another display of where the money comes from. You know, there's some T-shirts that I may have seen that says, where's, what does it say? Show me the money. So I told them I would do my best to show them the money. And so here's where the money comes from, in the general fund. Property tax, motor vehicle franchise fees, local option sales tax, which we've talked about, business and occupation tax. In our city, our business and occupation tax, people are citing their business in our community. It's growing our base. Building permits are growing our base. Permits, you can see that that area is considerable in our city. Next slide, please. And then special funds, we've talked a little bit about that. Hotel motel, east and west side tads are here. And then this is what accounts for all special funds, for $27 million. Next slide. And so where does the money go? I told you where the money came from. Where are you spending the money? Where does the money go? And so in this year's operating budget, $111 million for general operating, which, as I said, was the base budget. The base budget this year includes those things that I already shared, ongoing expenses, additional costs that we have no control over, and I have included a 3% cost of living adjustment for all city employees. The new initiatives in the general fund account for $17 million. A little bit left over, capital and one-time expenditures. We've set aside money for grants, and then capital and one-time expenditures from your accumulated fund balance. And while we have not closed out 22's books, we are very close to being able to do so, and we anticipate that the fund balance will end up at close to $70 million. So with this deduction of $23 million, it still leaves us with about four and a half months of operating funds. So our rainy day fund is pretty healthy. If we had an emergency, we would be able to continue to operate the budget for about four and a half months with no revenue. Next slide. And so here are the big categories of where the money goes. Not surprising, and this is the total budget, all categories. Public safety is going to be our largest recipient of expenditure by category, followed by general administration and public works, parks, and then we have grant funds, and of course, our T-SPLAS expenditure that we plan on for fiscal '24. Next slide. And this is more detailed. Generally, we categorize by these different, rather than putting every department on the screen, we group activities on the screen, so that you have a sense of where your money is going. And so there's the base budget on the first column, and the value of new initiatives on the second column for a total, which comes to the $206 million. Next slide. So this is the part of the budget that I like the best, which is our opportunity to see how we can impact the community through new initiatives. As I said earlier, things that you have talked about, things that the community has shared with us, things that the staff has given us input on, and also what I bring to you from my body of professional experience. So the first item, and I'm not going to read every one of them, because you can read, and this information will be available to everybody after. We also have a short budget in brief booklet for everyone, which highlights the, which provides the highlights of the budget. But critical ones that I, this is the largest category, critical ones that I have heard you loud and clear are things like implementing the Streetlight Master Plan, and this is the first phase. This is a very small initial investment in the Parks Master Plan. Won't get us, you know, a very far way through the $22 million, but I wanted to make sure that we had a good faith effort, so we could make a start. I've also heard you say many times that it's very frustrating to get through the city hall, and so I'm re-establishing a citywide call center, which will work under the umbrella of my office. Council's priorities, there's a separate list of things that you all raised in our budget retreat. Many of those are infrastructure-related, and they are reflected in that section. We also, you'll be happy to know, we have funding for matching our ARC projects. We have four major ARC projects, which are close to getting ready to be implemented, and we have to provide a match. And we also have some gravel roads that have come up periodically, and we have included some funding to begin that work. Transportation, those things that are not able to be included in our T-SPLAS program for sign signals, bridge repair, and guardrail repair. I said I wasn't going to read everything, and now I'm reading everything. And then there are some other categories that have been included. Pedestrian safety at $200,000 per council member for you to allocate and help us to understand where you think the highest priorities are in your district and county, and citywide for pedestrian safety improvements to be made. And that's kind of the list under quality of life and public infrastructure. So future city facilities for public service and an implementation strategy. Next slide. So in the background is our vision for what could be your public safety center for fire. And you have had a lot of discussion about building a fire training center, a police headquarters, and a city hall. And so what I've incorporated in the budget is funding for debt service for up to $100 million for those three facilities, and the opportunity for us to move forward from talking about it and buying land to implementing. And this amount of funding in your budget is able to be, based on your current status, is part of the reoccurring expenditure. So every year, for 30 years, you would be expected to budget $7.5 million or so for your debt service, like a mortgage. So this is the opportunity, as we move forward, to be able to identify these funds and be able to actually go out to the market through our financial advisor to quantify the dollars. I used a ballpark, because the city is so young, you do not have a bond rating, but the city is very well-reserved. Your finances are, the equivalent of your debt-to-income ratio is really good, and so we will, I think, compete very strongly in the market for, even in this environment, the municipal space is still getting really good interest rates. The other things that are included here are the Park CIP and some funding for cultural affairs, and improvements to existing facilities that we have, to include doing some things with our existing city hall space. We apparently are going to be in that space for several more years while we build, and quite frankly, I think we need to do better for our employees and for our customers, especially around that customer service interface at the CDRA front desk, if you will. And so while we're, while we're planning for the future, at the same time, we want to live in better space, that is more suitable and provides for a better working environment. Next slide. Public safety, among the things that people expect from us, is to provide a safe environment. We have added additional sworn officers for police and vehicles, as well as a big contributor to this section is expanding the Fire EMS Plan, which you all approved last year. Now we're putting some funding toward it. This is by no means the full funding that's required, but it takes us to the next step. And these are, most of these are department requests in the public safety space, and after evaluating them, I believe these are all fair. Next. Another favorite category for me, workforce development and implementation of best practices. It is no secret that, next slide, please. It's no secret that we are very short-staffed, and we need the opportunity to be able to meet the needs and implement the way that you all anticipate, expect, and that the community expects. One area that you'll be hearing about later in this special call meeting is, over a year ago, you made a commitment to consider increasing your lowest-paid employees to $20 an hour, and we have done the calculation for that, and I am putting that as a special new initiative in the budget. This does not calculate the compression effect, which means it doesn't deal with everybody who's above that, it brings those who are below. The way I intend to deal with the compression effect is through the pay and classification study, which is already ongoing. The first meetings with that have already occurred. And the third one is where I've put a lot of energy into, and it's reorganization of the city of South Fulton, and creating some new departments. One of those departments is procurement, which I've talked to all of you about that before. Another is a separate cultural arts department, because I, I'm sorry, cultural affairs department, because I believe that the arts and the operation of our critical venue facilities, both Wolf Creek and Southeast Arts Center, need to have special focus. A third department is general services for facilities and fleet. Having those stood up by a subject matter expert, who is able to have full staffing and support, is going to enable us to get our projects completed on time. I told directors, they asked me, when does the budget become effective? I said that the day after the council approves the budget, we start to move. And so October 1st, I expect us not to have inertia, but I expect us to start moving just about immediately, once the budget is approved. Additionally, I am adding quite a bit of resources to the finance department, under the leadership of a permanent chief financial officer, and I'm adding some resources to human resources for talent acquisition and onboarding. So in addition to that, the, you see there are some other areas for fire training support and the digitization initiative out of the clerk's office, and safety awards program. So planning for the future, I confess that I'm not a planner by nature, but I understand the importance, the relevance, and the value of planning, and so there are several plans that I think are overdue. The update of your comprehensive master plan, the study to determine impact fees, a trail master plan, the historic resources survey, the LEOC plan, which evaluates our risk and helps us to prepare for natural disaster. And in talking to ARC, they recommend that we look at our transportation master plan and see if it is time for all of South Fulton to take another look at that plan, which was approved in 2021, but we have seen considerable changes, you know, especially coming out of the pandemic. And last but not least, the facility master plan, because I know if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So I want to make sure that as we consider our facilities, our space, we do it in an organized, orderly, and disciplined manner, and we make sure we don't have redundancies and make missteps, especially because this is such a large investment on behalf of the And local option sales tax, these are the projects that are expected to be completed in fiscal '24. This is not everything we will collect. Some projects go year over year. There's some projects that are, that are ongoing now, that will be finished in 2024. Projects that have been appropriated this year that are incomplete will carry over to next year, and we will bring that back to you after the beginning of the fiscal year, to let you know what those are and ask you to allow us to continue those projects. Next slide. And so next steps. This is, as a reminder, this is my proposed budget. It is in no way the final answer, and we fully expect that you will review, you will get your detail, which is going to be a thick book with every department, every organizational chart, significantly more detail than what you've been given today. We expect you to give us feedback, make changes. We know we will hear from the public in two public hearings. And so this is my proposed budget, but I also recognize that there will be changes. The public hearings for millage, as I said, are going to be tomorrow, and then a week from, a week from tomorrow, there'll be a morning and an evening. We're doing three millage rate hearings, not because you're raising the millage rate, but because valuation has increased, and anytime there's an increase, the state of Georgia requires us to do three millage rate hearings, public hearings. There'll also be two hearings on the budget before you adopt. So one of those will be on the 22nd, and one of those will be on the 5th of September. And then we're projecting budget adoption for September 12th. So you'll have ample time to review, meet with us, ask questions, make recommendations, and changes, which we then can incorporate into what will be the final budget proposition for your adoption. Next steps. And so lastly, I want to thank everyone who's helped me to put together the future-focused budget for fiscal '24, particularly the budgeteers in the budget and finance team, public affairs, other departments, who have all come together, and we've had a supporting cast of consultants that have helped us, and even the print shop, who at the very last minute got the budget in brief completed for us. So next slide. And now I am open for your questions.
All right. Budgeteers, I love it.
That was excellent. Thank you, Ms. Subedan.
Thank you.
I do have one, uh, issue or, or, or one thing I'd like to bring your attention to. With the budget calendar, if you want to just back up to that slide, uh, and it's fine if, if, if you all can't, uh, but it, it was a, there were two budget hearings, August twenty-second in the PM and September fifth in the AM. Just for your consideration, maybe we should switch those around. The September fifth will be the Tuesday after Labor Day. So people will be getting back from a three-day vacation and then do an AM budget hearing. Uh, but if you all feel comfortable with it, I, I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to bring that up. All right. And I see in the queue, we have our queue open, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Subedan, thank you very much for, um, a very informative budget. I look forward, I appreciate that you put in a, a future focus on the budget. But also you did remind us that we do have a small wave of mirror that we no doubt would like to get away from, but we probably can't. I don't know, I may, I may feel, I'm, I don't know, I may be in the minority with, with this one, but, um, you know, when I look at this budget and this year we're adding, it looks like an additional twenty-eight million dollars. I know you mentioned that some of that might come from some existing funds, correct?
That's correct.
However, we have, we are still continuing to increase the budget. Our last full budget under Fulton County in 2016 was actually fifty-five million dollars. Yes, we didn't have, um, we didn't have, um, Fulton Industrial in the mix. But if we consider going from fifty-five million to thus at two hundred million, that's a whole lot of increase. And I, I also appreciate the fact that the, the revenue source is very diverse. But beyond the local option sales tax and the, um, the residential, the tax on the residential, um, units, um, none of those others hit ten percent. So my, my first challenge for us is I, I want to see how we can recommend getting some of those others up, right? If anything that we're doing here will help to increase that, again, I look forward to going into, into the details. The other thing is I am, um, I'm still thinking going from fifty-five million to two hundred million since we have become, become a city. I, I, and with the constant, seemingly constant increase in those property values, we haven't really given anything back to the citizens. And I am trying to figure out if we even, listen, we have, we have a lot to do. I, I get it, we have a lot to do. But at the same time, with the values constantly going up, and I know we raised the millage rate once since we became a city, I would have, I would still like to see us give some consideration of finding a way to roll that millage rate back. Because again, since we've become a city, our citizens have paid and paid and paid. And I just think that's, again, I was one of those that on, were on the street talking about, we ain't gonna raise your taxes. I know COVID happened and the folks who were here had to do what they had to do, but I, I'm hoping that we can take a closer look at this budget and that millage rate to see what we can do about it. And this is coming from a council member who have my hand up saying, hey, I don't have a community center in this district, I want one. But I still have to be mindful of the citizens who are carrying the bill for the city. Thank you for doing the, the, the safety award thing. I, I look forward to learning more about that, um, in, in details to see what is it that we're doing. But I suspect it's something that's going to help us even with our insurance rates and all that, all that thing. I, I do have one question, if you could answer this, the, the thing on the resiliency, what does that actually mean? What, what, what is that program that we're trying to launch? Cause that seems like something, something is new. I haven't seen that before.
So under planning, the...
Uh, it was under, it was communit, communicative resiliency and it was under something to do with the fire?
It's emergency management.
Emergency management, yeah.
Yes. It's a, it's page twenty-nine and it is the, um, local emergency, um, operations plan and risk analysis. So we can, um, identify those things in our community that are high risk and be aware of them. Um, most jurisdictions make sure they have that. It's very important for fire. So as an example, it helps us to identify areas that may have, um, greater fire risk, um, greater risk of flooding, greater risk of, um, tornado. And so this was one of those that the, um, came up in the retreat and one of those things that the fire chief also, um, had on his list of things that he thought were important.
I know we, um, we mentioned, at least I mentioned this when we had the installation of the solar system on Fire Station Six in District Four. And I know that the plan of the Fire Department is to continue to do this to the rest of our, um, of our fire stations. And we've talked about doing other government facilities where they can basically operate off the grid if necessary. But I'm hoping that while we're doing that, we look at creating some of these centers, like we had to do for Bird at last Christmas. What if it was a power outage, a major one? Where would we be able to house people in the city who need help, seniors who need their medication to be stored? We need to take a look at how we, we do these. At least we have one right now in Fire Station Six. But what would we have to do to that center to actually make it a place where it's a refuge for the community if power goes out for like two days? Okay? All right. Thank you.
All right, if I could have someone from IT come check my computer, my internet has gone out. I know that's one of those infrastructure upgrades that we are working on, but I did see Dr. Ral, you were next in the queue?
Point of information.
Uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis, District Three.
So you, your computer is gone out, but the clerk is our record keeper? And can't you see the queue, Mr. Adams? And I'm asking, my point of information is I think the record keeper can also see the queue.
If you check the screen, it looks like his is gone out as well.
Yeah, the, the internet did take down the queue.
So, so, so while we work on that, I'll just go right down the line. Dr. Ral.
Thank you. Um, I wanted clarification. I saw an environmental inspector in the budget and I wanted to know what our strategy is because while we talk about, um, pedestrian safety and bike paths, I know that right-of-way acquisition is time-consuming and this has been something I've been concerned about. How do we make sure we move the needle on that now so that we can get to construction? And then, um, I just want to thank you because this is probably the most thorough budget presentation I've seen in six years and I truly appreciate it because it gives a holistic look at what's going on with the city. And so one thing that stands out is the Freeport exemption. Uh, that's a large number. Have you seen where in other cities they cap how much or? Because that's thirty-two million dollars right there across the board when we look at all the exemptions, but Freeport, I'm, I'm just curious.
So in order to, um, and so to be clear, the Freeport exemption is actually four-point-nine million. The, the millage...
But the total value of all the exemptions.
All exemptions, correct. Right. So in order to encourage the, um, economic development, the state passed the ability to expand the Freeport exemption and most cities passed it. I think you passed it also.
Yeah.
It really is to encourage, um, economic development. I don't know if, if other communities have decided to put a cap in there, but that is something we can research and get back to you. I will say on right-of-way acquisition, you know, it's one of those things that is really a slow grind. So we met with, um, the ARC week before last, I believe, and on one of our projects, it's a sidewalk project, two of our sidewalk projects, we had to acquire seventy-seven parcels.
Right.
And we've acquired seventy-two and five are going through the condemnation process, which is miserable, but you know, um, it's part, it's part and parcel of it because they won't let us do a sidewalk and leave a gap. And so if we don't get those five parcels, the project goes away. So one of the things, we, we have used a third party to help us with right-of-way acquisition through Public Works, a contractor. One of the things I have thought about is if we are at those last five, what we probably need to do is solicit your help and say, you know, this is in your district, can you help us with this, these potential property owners to explain that we are trying to do sidewalks and it's, you know, it's, it's generally beneficial to the whole community? A lot of times the reason we get stuck with right-of-way acquisition is we can't get a hold of the property owner or there's, you know, the, the process is getting bogged down. So, um, but we do have resources that we are using for that purpose, but when you have long strings of sidewalk and seventy-seven parcels is a lot of parcels.
Right.
Some of them are not very big. They're literally, you know, um, forty foot in front of, um, but when you get that many and you get hung up, it becomes challenging. But we do have resources in the budget for that purpose.
Uh, I think it's helpful to get that clarification because we hear a lot about what's happening with sidewalk projects, not understanding the complexity that you got to get that right-of-way from all those property owners. And I know in what you proposed for future seeking, looking ahead, almost all of those roads are very long roads and so they'll have comparable numbers of right-of-way acquisitions. So, uh, just whatever kind of priority, um, on that. And, and again, if you could just touch on the environmental inspector, how that's going to work in the city.
Right. So that was a request of code enforcement. They have several cases that come up that have an environmental challenge and they wanted somebody who had that skill set to be able to essentially represent the city and to help us with, um, identifying what those specific environmental issues are. On that, on the environmental spectrum, I also did want to let you know that we are, um, attempting to acquire an environmental professional consultant for the purpose of expanding our brownfield application reach. And that is currently in the budget. So that's one of those things we will probably ask you to carry over. We talked about with a couple of you, the need for, um, establishing an environmental department that focuses on all things environmental. And, um, I think it's very necessary. I just don't think we're there yet. I really think we need to build a solid foundation and help us to, um, be successful with some of our basics and perhaps we can embark on some of these more aspirational, important things in, in our next phase. But right now I'm trying to solidify your base.
Thank you.
Are the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes, District Two?
Thank you, um, for recognizing me, Mayor. Have we restarted the internet? I believe they said the YouTube channel has stopped working. We have restarted?
No, they're, they're working on it.
Okay. So the, all of the residents that are texting me, they're working on it. It's back up? Okay. Thank you. So, um, Ms. Subedan, kudo to you in regards to this, um, presentation. This is probably six years on council and probably the most thorough one I've ever seen in my entire, um, city council existence. So this is, and a budget book. This is amazing. So thank you for that. Councilwoman Sebastian, uh, took my first question in regards to the resiliency plan. But can you share a little bit more about the safety awards program? What exactly is that?
So in, um, in other jurisdictions that I've worked in, this was, this is a, uh, new initiative coming out of HR. Um, you essentially incentivize employees for, for being safe. So employees who drive for a whole year with no preventable accidents, no incidents, no tickets, you know, they may get recognized and get a small award. Employees that are in our high-risk, um, areas that go a whole year and have no, um, on-the-job injuries, they get a, a recognition and a small award. And quite honestly, in other places, you really can make it very, um, competitive and also a morale booster for employees because they get the opportunity to be recognized, really for doing the right things. You know, we can't always penalize people. Sometimes we have to incentivize them to, to be more careful and to, you know, like you get the, when you drive and you get the safe driver award and they give you a deduction on your, your insurance premium. This is sort of not the same thing, but it's a way to encourage employees to recognize that safety, you know, and lack of safety is a real cost to us.
So it's not limited to just public safety officials? It's for then to all of the employees in the city?
It's for all city employees.
Oh, excellent. Um, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the streamlining. Are we, in the budget, did we think about the streamlining of the permitting service or putting more, um, resources behind the permitting process? Because that has been probably one of the things that generates a lot of money for the city of South Fulton, but also is a hindrance sometimes. So I didn't see it, I may have missed it, but is there a place where you have kind of, um, beefed up that department?
So we haven't added resources because what we're trying, what we are doing there is working toward implementation of the Tyler Technologies ERP. And what I believe that's going to do is create considerable efficiencies for residents who need to use and business owners, as well as for our, um, staff members. And so rather than adding, um, additional FTEs, full-time employees, what we're doing is focusing on the implementation of the ERP. It has two sides. One side is the permitting process and you'll be happy to know that special events will be included in that. And, um, and I'm hoping to be able to have internal events included in that. The other side of it is the financial part of, of the ERP. So they're, they're same system following two different tracks. The permitting is ahead of, of the financial, but the financial, we're expecting to have it come online in twenty-four. Again, that's one of those things that we're carrying over from fiscal twenty-three and you will see that come back to you because the project isn't finished.
Okay. And the environmental inspector, I'm really excited about that. I know code enforcement, uh, wanted that position. Is that a full-time or a part-time role? Does...
That's a full-time role and the amount is just basic, you know, the lowest level. It probably is going to come back higher than that, but we put it in at the, at the rate that, um, that the department requested it.
And their overall job would be to pretty much, um, to, I guess, identify, uh, EPA issues or things of that nature, some of the stuff that we're having within our community?
Correct.
Okay.
And also represent us in court and have that subject matter expertise.
Okay. So they would definitely be the subject matter experts, so they'll have the, the skill set to deal with that. I think that's pretty much it. I think it's important, um, to explain what we will possibly use the rainy day fund for, um, because I do get a lot of questions in regards to that.
Sure.
Um, I'm glad you have, um, shared the realistic truth about where South Fulton is because a lot of people think that we don't have funding or finances or whatever the case may be. And you could see through your evaluation of the budget that we are doing pretty well. But, um, can you share exactly what the rainy day fund could be possibly used for?
Sure. I can give you a real-life example. Um, I worked in a community that got rocked by a very, very bad tornado and back-to-back. One was the beginning of January, the other was the end of January. And we had to do a considerable amount of cleanup, restoration, repair of the right-of-way. And, you know, people are of the impression that FEMA and GMA come down and write a check. That's not how it works. You have to pay for everything. And then you go through a long, tedious, tiresome process to be reimbursed. The rainy day fund allows the government to have the funding to be able to respond to community needs. to be able to respond to community needs in case of emergency. And so, the other thing it does is it buffers you in case we have another two thousand and eight. You know, if the market crashes and all of a sudden the bottom drops out, you don't wanna have to lay off police officers. And so, it gives you some cushion because the market is cyclical. You know, people think, you know, the last time I saw eight-and-a-half percent interest rates was in nineteen ninety when we bought our first home. Nobody ever thought we would see that again, but here we are. So, things change. The rainy day fund allows us to prepare for the future. It's pretty much what you try to do if you're in, you know, in your own home. If you can, you try to put aside a little money. So, when that roof needs to be replaced, you know, you have a little bit of, of reserve. I know that most of us have, you know, we, we go paycheck to paycheck. But in an ideal world, you try to save up for a rainy day.
Awesome. Uh, and the last thing was about the, I believe it was the sidewalks. I know um you have a list there. And we had Merck Road and I'm assuming that Union, these are the ones that we've been asking for, for Westlake High School around that area. Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm putting that on record so everybody can go back and look at the recording and see that, you know, Councilwoman Gomes has still been working on these sidewalks.
And we have met with the school district and they've basically said they're, they've done everything they're gonna do. So, the rest is on us. Um, I will say this, that on some of these um bigger line items in the budget, we will come back to you and confirm all the projects that are inside of these before we go out to bid on these projects. So, there's no confusion, everybody's on the same page. There's funding in the budget for events. There'll be a list of every event in the whole budget. So, you'll have the opportunity to see that before you approve the budget.
All right. Thank you so much. That concludes my questions.
The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. For recognizing me. Ms. Subbanan, I wanna commend you on um presenting and proposing a thorough budget. Um, I agree with the rest of my colleagues. This has been the most thorough presentation in my six-year tenure here, um, serving on council. Uh, I am also very appreciative for page eighteen, um, which highlights the exemption. That was one of the things that I asked for. And it's, the reason I asked for this property tax exemption um is because I eyeballed, I mean, I eyeballed a few of the seniors in my district and asked for this information from the Tax Commissioner's Office. And what I noticed is that most seniors that are sixty-two or above is paying zero to minimum taxes in our coffers. And then I did deeper research to find out why that is happening. And did deeper search to find out other cities don't have the exemptions that we have. But when we have these exemptions, what happens is that someone has to pay for exemptions. And it usually falls on the people who are not sixty-two and above. And that's okay because I do want our seniors to age in place. And I do want them to be able to afford to age in place when they have paid into the coffers for many years. And I'm hoping I will get that same favor when I'm sixty-two. Um, but the fact of the matter is, we often hear that we're not doing anything for our seniors and we're not taking care of our seniors. And the data doesn't lie. Um, we have, in the city of South Fulton, been exempting over thirty-two million dollars of our taxes, meaning that that's money that's not being paid into the general fund to make sure that our senior, seniors continue to pay zero to minimum property taxes. Whereas, most of the services in the city are being paid for our, well, forty-eight percent of our revenue is coming from property tax. So, I just wanted to highlight, am I understanding this correctly? That sixty-two, we have a one thousand two hundred and ninety-one seniors that are sixty-two or above, and we are currently exempting one point nine million dollars in taxes, meaning that they're not paying any of the taxes. We also have one thousand three hundred and forty-four seniors in the city, and we are exempting one point seven million of their taxes. Then we have another senior exemption where we are exempting seven hundred and sixteen thousand of taxes. And some of the seniors are paying zero to minimum taxes because they can get double exemptions um based on, you know, not only if they, their age, but also if they are veterans or disabled. Am I um understanding this correctly?
It is correct. And if you look in the budget in brief, there is a glossary that explains each exemption category in more detail. We did a summary here in the presentation to make it less cluttered. But if you look at the book and, and the, the book is for you and for the citizens, there's a glossary page and it's, it identifies what each of the exemption categories actually means.
And so, I wanna dispel the notion that we're not giving anything back to our residents. Because when we became a city, we were in a deficit. And when we were in a, even though we were in a deficit, the city council was committed to making sure that we brought over every exemption that residents were receiving on the county level. And that's how, against our financial advisement advisor, who does not agree with us giving all of these exemptions, everybody on the city council has committed to making sure that these exemptions stay in place so that we can take care of our seniors. We, in addition of giving back to our residents, um, have with the sanitation and that, and that applicant, an application needs to be placed on the website, provided uh sanitation assistance. That's whoever receives those benefits, those are benefits that we have to pay for. Taxpayers who do pay the taxes, the small business uh benefits that we gave to small businesses, the rental assistance that we provided to people who live in the city who qualify for rental assistance. We are constantly keeping in our forefront, how do we take care of the less of these, the least of these in our seniors? We are constantly giving back. And so, with that being said, can you please expand or expound on why you think it would not be prudent for us to um do a rollback when we are not increasing the mileage rate? The mileage rate will still remain the same. And we still will continue to keep these exemptions in place. We could still look for ways to give back um to the least of these and the less of these and the seniors. Because we have not, we have not asked you to get, we have not made any decision to get ready, get rid of any of these exemptions or not go forward with the rental assistance program, small business programs. Would you please expound on why you think it would not be prudent for us to roll back and to keep our mileage rate the same?
So, from my perspective, and um you're the policymakers, but from a professional perspective, just like the cost of doing business for everybody has increased, the cost for doing business for the city has increased. We pay extra for fuel, we pay extra for parts for our vehicles, we pay extra for our vehicles. We are having to um, to be competitive. We're having to increase the um, the salaries of our employees. We occupy space, we're having to pay extra for that space. One of the single largest line item increases in our budget is electricity. It's going up. We have so many needs in this city. The buildings we inherited from Fulton County all need a lot of work. They're old, they are less than satisfactory. We have challenges with everything from stability of internet to, you know, the basic A C continuing to work consistently. And so, consequently, um, the way the budget is structured, we, we planned on no additional money. What we um are proposing is that you keep it level. Part of the challenge with mileage and with property values, as I said earlier, it's cyclical. If you decide to do a rollback, which is your right, you know, you're the policymakers, just understand that that is a reduction that you never regain. And the hardest thing that you will have to do, if you have to do it, would be to catch up. And that'll be a much more difficult conversation to have. Um, and you may be forced to have to do that. I've been in governments that roll back year after year and then they had to raise their mileage rate two and a half, by two-point-five mils just to be able to pay their police and fire. And that created a, a riot. So, you know, the conservative approach is to keep it level. That's my recommendation because you, you just never really know what the market is gonna do. And so, yes, we're, we're definitely seeing a property value increase at this time. But all of us have lived long enough to know that it has not always been this way.
Thank you. And I just would like to make a valid point to what you're saying. This is what we are experiencing with Fulton County. They made a rush, an irrational decision to roll their mileage rate back. And now, we will see a significant meal rate increase to help them pay for services that are much needed. And that, our request to roll the mileage rate back um was uh opposition to many of the commissioners and they were ignored. And now, all of us are gonna have to pay for that. Um, again, I am not in any way recommending that we take away any exemptions from our seniors. Um, but I would venture to say that the city of South Fulton is one of the best cities for seniors to live because I was told today that uh the tax, average tax bill in the city, in one of the major, one of our major cities, is five hundred and sixty-three dollars. They do not give the exemptions that we give in the city of South Fulton. If you are the age of sixty-two or above, you are paying zero to minimum property taxes. I looked at several of my seniors in my district property tax bill and they are now getting the L-three, the L-eight. Some of them are getting the S-five. They are uh reaping the benefits of forty-five exemptions. And I'm not upset, I'm happy for them. And I don't mind not taking a rollback and paying what I'm supposed to pay so that our seniors that are sixty-two and above can continue to age and pay, age in place at minimum to zero taxes that they are currently paying. Um, the other thing that I would like to ask is, in the current budget, are we, or are you, have you considered, and this is something, this is an action that we requested of the former C D R E director that we did not see coming to fruition. And it's a cost savings that I think that we need to consider. And that is bringing our building inspection process in-house. We are currently paying a contractor um close to four million dollars for uh, the last time, if it's not four million, it was close to two million. Can you, does anyone have any?
So, we are close.
Charles Abbott.
Right, right, right. And so, we worked with them to go to a flat rate. Um, and the flat rate is considerably lower. We are still looking to hire a chief building official that will work for us. And so, there are two potential options. One of them is to come back to you with a hybrid model or continuing to go, do the work of trying to hire building inspectors in-house. Um, given the construction market, that is a challenge because these inspectors are working for private companies and making a ton of money. And so, um, but we are close to being able to hire our own chief building official. But we did also negotiate um a flat rate with them, saving this city eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay. The other thing that I want to ask is a grant department. Um, I'm not necessarily in favor of a grant department. I mean, um, because we have not been successful with um hiring a grant writer. In over six years, we have had many of compliance, grant compliance, and there's a difference. Are you recommending that we, what are you recommend, because I know that we're not taking enough, we're not taking advantage of enough opportunity in the grant area. So, what are you recommending that we do as far as us securing more grants?
Well, my recommendation is similar to what, when I watched your meeting before I became an employee here, I remember hearing more than one of you talk about hiring the subject matter expert to write a grant dependent on your needs. And so, there's funding in the budget to be able to do that. Um, there are, there's a grant manager and there's a grant coordinator in-house. But that person will help us with compliance. Um, I am very concerned about compliance. It's one of those things that if you do it improperly, you, you get clawed back. And so, which means the, the granting agency wants their money back. And so, I don't want us to be in that position. And so, my recommendation is that we have staff that makes sure that we take care of compliance and that we hire for the specific subject matter expertise for the specific grant that we want to go after. But I'm also really concerned that we haven't fully implemented on grants that we already have. And so, I'm really gonna be pushing to make sure that the grants we have are fully expended and the vision that you had to expend those grants actually does happen.
Okay. And so, I, I yield, um, but I just wanna finish out with this. Um, well, two things. Can you um, for the community outreach, another benefit that we give to employees, they don't have to pay for Juneteenth concerts, they don't have to pay for our annual Thanksgiving's giveaway. Can we make sure that those items are budgeted and, and um, I don't know what department these, I know the Juneteenth was, I don't know what department because I know you may, you're making some changes. But can you make sure those items are continued to be budgeted, budgeted for? And then, we adopted about a year ago um to become a Purple Heart City. And if we are a Purple Heart City, we don't just need to put out graphics that we are a Purple Heart City. We need to do something to commemorate that. We are a Purple Heart City. We have a lot of veterans in our city. And um, as a body, it was sponsored by Councilmember Reese, I respect that. But we need staff to look to see what other cities are doing to commemorate and bring that recommendation back on how we commemorate our veterans. Because we, again, this is twenty-twenty-three, we adopted that resolution in twenty-twenty-one, and we haven't done anything. Um, okay. And I'll yield.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Reese, that was a great segue to you, sir. Councilwoman Sebastian?
You were late, he went.
I'm just going around, our queue is out. So, if you have any questions, comments, anyone on this side?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Um, Madam Subbanan, you embrace the brand, I love it, uh, your colors. And so, um, but I'm just gonna get on to this Purple Heart there is. Because uh, I did ask for Ace Hardware to get order a bunch of purple lights and uh, so we can light the sky purple yesterday. However, the power's out, at least in my house. And so, we're gonna decide to do this all week. And actually, there was something planned. There was a whole concert this past Friday that was gonna take place, but um, things got um mis-screwed. But however, that was to honor our veterans and that was to honor our Purple Heart veterans specifically. But, you know, however, I um digress from all of that. And so, uh, but the city should do something and should have something in there for uh, uh, veterans, particularly those who have earned that Purple Heart award. And that was my legislation and thank you, Council, for uh passing that as well. However, um, back to here, is the sidewalks for Highway two-seventy-nine and from Flat Shores and one-thirty-eight, have all those right-of-way acquisitions been acquired? And is that project going to get started underway? Or where are we at in the process with that?
Can I get back to you on the specifics?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, on, uh, pays for, go for, to focus on economic development to promote a healthy and prosperous economy. Does that include establishing a L S B E program, a local small business program uh, for future procurements?
Not specifically. Um, if that is something that you um, have any? If that is something that you have in the queue or something that you want us to focus on. Then certainly, we can go back and figure out how to incorporate that. One of the things that I'm asking for is the establishment of a procurement department. I'm not sure if you caught that.
Yes, ma'am.
You did. And so, in there, I'm also asking for a compliance officer. So that would be an appropriate area for us to develop our SBE program, an MBE program.
Awesome, thank you for that. I do thank you, I hear on page 20 for the bridges, that Stax Road is included in that. And so, over CXX, and because I've been asking for, because that train stops, right? And it usually blocks up sometimes Mallory and Flat Shos, I mean Fairwood. And however, sometimes it sits there for 16 to 18 hours. So really, the only way to get over that is you have to just go over the railroad. And so a design for that would be great. Workforce development and implementation of best practices. That's good, because you know Parks and Rec has a workforce academy. And so, I advise you all to look into towards that. As also to the Historical Resources Survey, as Burdette Park and Burdette Field have made national history. And so, I do look forward to those to become historical landmarks. Because there will never again be a first in the nation. And so, and thank you for bringing a rendering, a visual of our fire station, our public safety headquarters, and city hall. As I think that this is something that we can all get behind, buy into, as we do have something tangible that we can see. And so if you can just get those little models in the glass case, so you know, that'd be awesome. And so that our constituents can come up and see that as well. And I do look forward to the digitation of the signage, particularly at our parks. I think every park should have a digital sign. That's also for anything that emergencies and messages, that's, we want to get out there. But outside of that, thank you for this thorough job.
You're welcome.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. We're going to just give everybody a first pass. Everyone over here has spoken once, so if there's anyone who needs to speak for a first time over here.
I didn't want to get shouted at. Thank you, City Manager, for a very professional, very thorough briefing. I know that since I've been on the council, this is the type of briefing that I've been asking for, for the past year and a half. And so I'm happy that we are finally in this place where we can have a detailed budget presentation with everything laid out very clearly for everyone to understand. And that's all I'm going to say, because most of what I wanted to say or questions I wanted to ask have already been asked. So, thank you very much. I'm glad you're here. I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate the work that you're doing to bring order to our operations in the city hall. Please don't quit.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. The Chair recognizes District 7 Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Subidan, when I got here in December, it happened to be during, like, it was freezing. And there were a lot of pipes bursting. And we had to open up some warming sensors in some of the facilities that we have. And a few of us had to scramble to provide water. Because a lot of residents did not have water for at least a week, which prevented them from being able to use sanitation services in their homes. And so, many of us had to scramble to get water donated or look for water, which was a scarce resource at that time. And additionally, I remember going to a few warming stations and seeing that there wasn't any hot food for people that went there. Some of the homeless or people that just had to shelter there. So I was wondering if, well, if in your presentation, there was money budgeted for that type of thing? That would, I guess, fall under public safety?
So not specifically, but we do have a little bit of contingency. And so that would be an opportunity to tap that. But having the experience of knowing that happened, what we need to do this year is go into the winter by being prepared. And there is funding for facility master planning. As we do our facility planning, space planning. I think we also need to be looking at how many of our facilities have generators. And are capable of working well under those conditions, as well as being fully stocked. And I'm certain I can work with the fire department to make sure we're prepared.
Thank you. And sometimes even in those situations, we wind up having overtime, you know, for personnel. Also, in the last few months, well, I think it was July, or I forget what month it was. That we had the situation now for the second year with Mr. Rick Ross and his pool party and those type of activities. And I'm very pleased that Public Safety planned extremely well for that situation. However, Mr. Ross has never reimbursed our city for a lot of the overtime that was spent, that was an exorbitant amount. And so, now that we see that these type of things may happen from year to year. If we can get an input from Chief Meadows on what that overtime expenditure would be. And even look in the future to recovering those costs from Mr. Ross or anyone that engages in these type of activities that wind up pulling officers from areas that they're actually needed to be able to just keep traffic flowing and things, you know, going well. In addition to also looking for money and resources to deal with some of the littering that takes place after those type of huge events, which I think we did pretty good. However, we wind up on the news for something that had nothing to do with us. But we certainly want to make sure that we have people that can point out to the businesses what they need to do. And a mechanism for the cleanup. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I hear everyone. And it looks like our queue is back up. But I'm going to go to these folks, I think the rainy day fund, just to offer for Councilwoman Pritchett. I think that that's a great place to do some of that emergency assistance that you were talking about. We actually were devastated by a tornado here in 2018 over in District 4. And with that, we're going to do the second round of comments, starting with Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, thank you again. This is excellent. It's going to be by my bedside with a small nightlight. I would, I would love to see some comparisons to maybe cities that have a similar size and economies like us. Right? To see like what the, how their budget is structured, to see how we compare. So as we try to move to figure out how we increase our revenue. See if there are areas that we can sort of emulate and look at. I'm sure we could probably find some of those, if it's not too much, too much work. Right? That would be nice, at least, I would love to see that. The other thing, again, peering back a little bit into that rear mirror. Three council members over here work with staff. Myself, Councilmember Reeves, and now Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. We had several meetings with staff to flush out this issue of the grant and the grants department. I believe there are things in the budget. And I know when you spoke to me the other day, you talked about doing some bases. But I believe we have things in place. That is not an if anymore, that's a matter of when. And if I'm incorrect about it, you got to let me know. Because that was my understanding based on the work that we did before. If not, I would have to get with the three council members to decide what we have to do to make it happen. When we went on our trip last fall to Washington DC. I remember sitting down with Senators also of staff. And we mentioned what we were doing in terms of trying to put together that grants department. And they were ecstatic. And they were like, you guys are ahead of the game. If you guys can set, get this up and running and going, you will be ahead of the game. Right? We all know that there's lots of money out there. We need to find ways of efficiently accessing those. So if you need to meet with the three of us again to figure out what our vision was for doing that. I would suggest that maybe you do that, because there's probably not enough knowledge that was passed down accordingly. I'm going to go back and I'm going to look at page 18 again. And I want you guys to human me for a second. Page 18 gives a total people. At the, in that column, it talks about the number of seniors. And the total of that column is 23,500 people affected by this $32 million exemption bill. Am I off-base or am I correct? All right? 23, 23,517 people getting $32,543,642. You know what our population estimate is? 112,000. So it simply means that if you take away 112, you take away 23,000. We're talking about 80,000 plus more people who are carrying the rest of the bill for this city. We have to be very, very careful we don't tax people out of their homes. Which would negatively affect our economy here. And give us another set of problems that we might be creating for ourselves. So again, I'm just saying, human me. Look and see where we can find money to do some level of rollback. Because again, going from 55 million to 206 million from 2006 to 2023. In a short set of years, even though I know we have a lot of things to do. But this is a government, it is not our household. It don't mean we have to achieve everything tomorrow. So I'm just saying, be careful that we're not taxing people out of their homes. A homeowner came and knocked at my door. And she said to me, I got into my home during the downturn of the economy. When homes were being sold for cheap. Now that the value has increased significantly. I am paying that level of taxes on it, and I'm struggling to pay it. And I guarantee you, she's not the only one. So I just want to caution us, while we, you know, have the lights in our eyes and we're looking at all this money. I want to caution us that we're not hurting people in the process. And I yield.
All right, the Chair recognizes District 3 Councilwoman Helen Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. I just want to give a snapshot, because we did not go from 50 million to 178 million overnight. Last year, our fiscal year budget was 178 million. Our, when I got elected in 2017, we were operating in a deficit. We did not have a reserve fund. And to fiscal 18, we still did not have a reserve fund. In fiscal 17, because we started, we had a pro-rate, we had a 21K, $21 million budget. Fiscal 18, we went up to a $65 million budget. Fiscal 19, we went up to a $68 million budget. And so, we increase every year, which shows, which is a good thing. Because it shows that we have growth. It shows that we have been fiscally responsible. And it shows that we have been prudent. I am ecstatic to hear you say that we have a $70 million reserve. When we went from a deficit to a $70 million reserve. And one thing for sure, that we are not doing, is that we are not taxing our seniors out of their homes. Because the average senior in this city is paying zero to minimum property tax. And I am still committed to making sure that we maintain those exemptions. So that we can make sure we take care of our seniors. And if it takes me to keep the meal rate the same, so that we can continue to provide these $32 million in exemptions. I would very well do that. I remember when most of the homes in this region were upside down. I remember that day. And that day was not that very, I remember when I had to hold on to rental property. And pray that my tenant paid their rent every month. Because I had an option to either hold on it, hold on to it, pay the rent, or short sell it. Because the market was upside down. And thank God, the market came back, because I got out of that rental home as fast as I could. I sold it as fast as I could. So I'm glad, we can't have it both ways. Because I remember when people wanted to finance their homes. And they couldn't finance their homes. Why? Because their homes were upside down. They could not get their property to appraise. At the rate they needed to get it appraised to finance their homes. So we're seeing better days. And I am proud of Mayor and all of council. Especially of us who was in this fight for six years. Because we struggled. We robbed Peter to pay Paul. And that's why we're behind in some of our facilities. Now we have to give what residents have been asking for. They want better roads, they want better facilities, they want more lighting in the city. They want all these things that you highlighted in the budget. And what's most important to me is that we are not increasing taxes. We are not increasing taxes. We are not increasing taxes. We are maintaining our meal rate. Now, we are paying more because our values have gone up. And that's a good thing. That's a good thing. And we are still taking care of the average senior that is 62 and above. If you look at their property tax bill, they have four or five exemptions. And they are paying zero to minimum property taxes. I love my seniors. And I'm committed to making sure we take care of them. So if it means that I can't get a rollback, so we can maintain these $32 million in exemptions. Then I will do that. And I will listen to the city manager, who has over 30 years of expertise and experience of doing budgets in government. The $70 million deficit, I mean, the $70 million in reserve. I am happy to hear that we have that. And if anything catastrophic were to happen in this city, that we would not be bankrupt. I remember when we had to constantly take out tax anticipation notes. And wait until we got revenue to pay our bills. The tax anticipation notes were short-term tax notes. We had to borrow money to pay our bills and wait until the money came in. We don't have to do that now. Because we got money in the bank.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis, that's your time.
I appreciate it.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Madam City Manager, as you and I've discussed multiple times, I like to make data-driven decisions. Do you have time to model for us what we're able to do if we leave the millage rate the same? And what we would give up, if anything, if we roll the millage rate back? Because I think that we, we can have a lot of round-robin conversations about how we feel and what we think. But I would like to see some numbers, because... Because there's a direct correlation between the amount of money we have. And the things that we're able to do and provide. And so I think that not only for our own understanding. But also for the understanding of those hundred and twelve residents. Of what they, what we would not be able to do for them. What do we lose, if anything, if we roll the millage rate back? So that they can understand that, hopefully can understand that if we roll the millage rate back. Then don't scream at us when you can't get somebody to answer the phone. Cause we only have one person in a department and we can't hire anybody else because there's no money. And if residents are okay with that, that's fine. But can we quantify those things? Because it's very easy to sit and say. We pay too much taxes, we wanna roll the taxes back. But as my father would say, if you were here, you gotta pay the cost to be the boss. I believe that was his favorite B.B. King song. And so if we're going to reduce revenue. What is the reduction in what we can't? And if, and there may not be, but if there is, what is the reduction in what we can provide? So that if we take this action. Then we're equipped to say, well, yes, we would have been able to do that, but we rolled back the millage rate.
Yes, I can provide that.
Thank you.
All right, um, we're gonna move, but I, I do wanna mark this day on my calendar. I agree with Councilwoman Willis. Uh, I wanna take a little trip down memory lane to this fifty-eight million dollar budget we had when we were. Um, unincorporated Fulton County, fifty-eight million dollar budget. Um, had our streets so horrible, we have spent the last six years repaving them. Uh, many of them for the first time in fifteen or twenty years. And some people are still waiting. Um, fifty-eight dollars, fifty-eight million dollars left us with facilities like this. Where we don't even have good internet to have a meeting. And we're still waiting over a year for this pool to open. Um, fifty million dollars has us still asking questions about when are old national sidewalks going to be finished? Some of us attended a groundbreaking with the late, great Emma Darnell for Old National Sidewalks. Six years ago. Some of us attended one fifteen years ago. And it's not just Old National, it's Roosevelt Highway. There are people that are dying on our streets because they have nowhere to walk. Um, and so I, I also want to amplify, um, Mayor, uh, Pro Tim. Natasha Williams' question before we make you do all this math again, cause this is a beautiful book that you produced. Uh, can I just take the, the temperature of council? Um, if I could just get a consensus, uh, where we are on the rollback? How, how many people are in favor of one? We're gonna be, we have several questions. Yes, uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman.
We don't vote in these sessions.
Actually, we're voting, um, two times right after these question and answers. One for the minimum wage and one for the, uh, compensation. This is a special call meeting and so we are actually voting in this meeting.
My apologies, you're correct, but I'm back in the queue.
Okay, uh, but, but, uh, I would, if, 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 if it, if it is all, if it all right with, if it is all right with council. I would just like to see by a show of hands where we are on rolling back the millage rate. How many people are interested in seeing those numbers? I just don't want to direct you and our already incredibly hardworking staff to do something if. If it's not even really the will of the council, whatever the will of the council is, I will yield to that.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
We already have that number.
You do already have that number.
In increments of a quarter mil, we have that.
Awesome, thank you so much. No need for that question? All right, uh, everyone has spoken twice?
No.
Okay, uh, Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair.
And I'll come back to you too as well.
Madam Subidan, just a few more questions here. Uh, do we have, um, from proposed to reality, do we have a milestone, a metric component to this budget to, for, uh, implementation?
So I don't have a milestone to metric document for you. Um, partly because I wanna see what you're gonna approve. And, um, I knew the question about increments of the millage would come up, so we pre-planned that. Um, but certainly, once you have adopted, we will be doing quarterly, um, metrics on things. And we now know, we've been in business for six years, we know there are things that just really take a long time. So we will be starting those things first quarter. And we also know some of the challenges in the market. So there are things that we'll be kicking off very early in the year. Um, so to answer the question, do I have the document from conception and to metric? I don't. Do I conceptually know what that is and plan to have it? That is my plan.
Absolutely, thank you so much for that. And when it comes to facilities, uh, one thing I did see that was off here, um, I forgot, I was rendering for courts. Do we have?
We have incorporated funding in the budget for the courts at the facility we've identified. Um, we are working with Fulton County right now to try to assume that lease. And, um, more to come on that, but there is funding in the budget for that.
Okay, good deal. And as far as, uh, for CIP or capital improvement, uh, for parks and recs. Um, I would like to see if there's possibly, uh, to get a mobile rec center. Yes, actually, it's like a little bus where he comes on three sides and you know, they have all kinds of things in parks and go into communities. And just let them know of all of the great programming and things that we do offer. So that's just a suggestion. And so, um, but on page twenty-six, when it comes to pedestrian safety and sidewalks, particularly on flat shows. Um, our neighboring city did a great job of, uh, establishing, uh, look. And we would just kinda wanna take that from the continuum on where our boundaries lie. And start there and continue on down, uh, flat shows. And so I did ask for that under the T-spots two, and I do hope that that can, um, be implemented. Thank you.
All right, uh, the chair recognizes District One Councilwoman Dr. Ral. This is your second time.
Um, I would also like to say, I concur with Councilwoman Willis and the mayor. I think we've had these conversations and the things that I constantly hear from residents. About investment, whether it's our rec- recreation facilities, our parks, they've been begging us for this from day one. And, um, some decisions are hard, but you gotta do the right thing. Um, if we're gonna move this city forward, we have to make those investments. And I think we have to be realistic about it. Um, if you look at the average bill, we're dealing with parks, police, fire. And the average person is paying six hundred dollars, we are not the biggest part of your tax bill. And so, um, you know, I, I, I read what people put on social media, a lot of it is. I'm gonna say they're not pointing their fingers at the right people who are responsible. We're trying to dig ourselves out of something that's been going on twenty, thirty years worth of disinvestment. And for this body to constantly be under attack about us trying to fix something. We have made tremendous strides in terms of getting our fund balance together. And even when we talk Councilman, um, Sebastian about the budget, when you look at the feasibility study that was done to create this city. It had three revenue sources, that was it. You look at page fourteen, we got about ten. So we are moving in the, in the right direction. So, um, as it relates to that, the investments, the infrastructure, every time we take on a capital and project. We wind up overspending because the problem is bigger than we anticipated. So, um, that's my commentary on that.
All right, the chair recognizes District Two Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes, this is your second time. All right, um, everyone has spoken twice. Councilman Sebastian, if I allow you to speak a third time, later on in this meeting, someone else will wanna speak a third time and we'll be here. However long we're here, do you wanna speak a third time?
Madam City Manager said she's gonna present us with a scenario. We should, we should operate like a government that we wanna behave as if we have something to hide. Right? There's, there are. I requested before, if I didn't put it as eloquently in detail as, um, Mayor Pro Tim Williams, to ask specifically. For the scenarios to be put together, it's on the floor. Madam City Manager said, says it's available. Councilmember Royal, just now in the presentation, that, you know, tried to point me in the right direction. Said, admitted that we have thirty years of disinvestment sometimes in some of our facilities. We are six years in. The thirty years is now gonna get solved in six or seven years. Again, I'm just, I know all the stuff, all the lack of investment. Again, I was out there talking in the streets.
Point of order, Mayor.
The chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Helen Willis.
Are we gonna suspend the rules to let everybody go a third time?
I am sure that we will have to.
The only reason why I asked to speak again, because Councilmember Royal referred to me and I just wanted to. I just wanted to put on record again, as I said, if she said thirty years of disinvestment. And we asked for the scenarios, just give us the scenarios, cause we have nothing to hide. I congratulate you guys who are here in the early days. Right? You guys did a great job in starting up this city and bringing it to where we have seventy million dollars in the bank right now as reserves, right? But to me, that's even the point of not continuing to tax the residents or citizens at the rate that we're going right now. That we have, we've gone through the startup. We, we've done it, you guys have done it before I got here. So I'm, I'm just saying, present us the scenarios and let's go from there.
All right.
I'll be sure to share it with everyone.
We have, we have three more budget presentations, so, a budget hearing, so perhaps you could just incorporate it into the next budget hearing.
So just in wrapping up, thank you so much for the kind words. None of this could have been done by me alone. And I can't say enough about the staff, the consultant support, public affairs helped us get across the finish line. So this was absolutely a team effort and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Subidan, thank you, staff. All right, Mr. Clark, please sound the next item.
Next item on the agenda is item number three under Agenda Items. Resolution requesting the interim city manager take the necessary action to increase the minimum wage for city employees to twenty dollars per hour. Address any associated and or reasonable compression impacts for the 2024 fiscal year and for other lawful purposes.
Madam City Manager, did you have anything to add?
Um, I shared in the budget presentation, this allows us to bring both vacancies and filled positions that are non-sworn, non-public safety. Up from, um, where they are now to a minimum of twenty dollars an hour. The cost is about, with benefits, is about one point three million. And, um, it would, it is incorporated in the budget as a new initiative.
All right.
Sorry, one thing this will do is for us, if you are in concurrence. It will help us to guide our class and compensation study, um, consultants. So they know basically this is the floor and they need to make sure that any compression or, um. The effects of bringing up the lowest paid individuals doesn't disproportionately impact those in the middle. And in your resolution, you did ask that we, your previous resolution, you did ask that we exempt those at the top of the scale. And we have provided them with that information as well.
All right, thank you. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve our resolution to increase, uh, to implement minimum wage resolution for fiscal 2024.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion, I see Councilwoman Pritchett, District Seven.
Thank you for recognizing me. Uh, Ms. Subidan, do you know how approximately how many fall under in that category?
I did have that, I believe it is close to one forty, it's in your backup. I don't have the, um.
Hundred and forty.
Do not have the agenda item in front of me. Cory, can you see the backup? I know we had fifty vacancies and so we're counting for into the vacancies as we hire. And I believe it was one forty, but if you give me two seconds, I can grab that for you.
All right, is there any further?
I'd like to follow-up question.
Okay. Follow-up question.
Madam Subidan?
Yes.
Um, also, does that comprise of full-time and part-time?
Yes, yes, all employees. Um, all employees who are impacted. So if you're a part-time employee making less, you would come up to the twenty-dollar amount. Thank you, are you?
All right, the chair recognizes District One Councilwoman Dr. Ral.
Um, thank you for this because I think it was you, Mayor Khalid, who first brought this and, um, I supported it then. I think we all know the cost of everything has increased significantly. And, um, we wanna make sure our residents, I mean, our employees can afford to live in our city. So, uh, thank you, uh, for this.
All right, the chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Mayor for having the guts to, uh, bring this forward. I did not vote for this resolution when you originally voted, uh, brought forward. And I did not because I felt that when we did the wage and compensation study, that these individuals will be brought up. To, uh, twenty dollars through the wage and compensation study. But hence, we are here in budget and we're not, we don't have the wage and compensation study. The last one we did was in 2019. And, um, in 2019, that predates the pandemic and it, it predates the inflation that we all are facing. Um, due to the fallout of the pandemic. And, um, I do support our employees being brought up to this, uh, twenty-dollar an hour minimum wage. Um, not in any way that I mean to send that message for, uh, to thank. For employees not to be brought up to minimum wage. I just wanted us to have the data to support it through the wage and compensation study, which we do not have. But I am pretty sure that once we get that study back, it may come back to say that we should be paying more than twenty dollars an hour. Um, to our, um, lowest paid employee due to inflation and supply and demand and the fallout of, fallout of the pandemic. And I know there's still a fair fight, fifteen fight. But I have seen many national, um, articles and periodicals. Where people are slowly moving to, um, you know, twenty-dollar an hour fair fight wages for all. So I believe everybody should be fairly compensated for the hard work that they do. Um, I support, uh, union workers, I support unions. Um, because that's what they advocate mainly for is fair wages and working conditions. And so thank you for having the courageous, uh, um. Foresight to go ahead and implement this or recommend that we implement this on behalf of the employees of the city.
Thank you. Uh, the chair recognizes District Four Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, from day one, I was personally on board because, um. Everything has gone up. It has gone up for everyone. So I just wanna again echo those of Councilmember Willis and, you know, congratulate you for bringing this forward. I, I think I put something in the legislative process that regardless of how people work with a city, whether they're part of unions, whatever. I would like to see everyone at the base. I, I may not get that, but you know, if it's difficult for someone to, to live on less than twenty dollars, it's difficult for everybody to live on less than twenty dollars, right? So I, again, I would love to see that piece, that whatever department you're in, whatever union or non-union you're in, that in our city. If you work here, that base, that is your minimum that you would get, that. your minimum that you would get, that twenty dollars. And if our study shows that we need to go to twenty-two, then, or whatever, then hopefully we can find the money to make that happen. Thank you.
May I take a moment of special privilege, sir? The Chair recognizes District Two Councilwoman Gums. I'll come to you.
Well, I forgot what I was about to say. Um. I'm having a senior moment, but, um, I do want to say again, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I, I supported this measure. I, I think it's important because this also helps us with retention for our employees. Um, I think there's some place in the area that we are struggling with here in the city of South Fulton, um, henceforth why we have, uh, quite a plethora of vacancies. So I think this will also impact, um, that as, you know, we are really caring about our employees and this is a place that, you know, we support and want them to come and work for our city. So I do thank you for that. Um, I think you and Councilwoman Willis are on a roll tonight. Can we continue that? Um, so we can hurry up and move this meeting along. I'm hoping that you all will continue. So thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. The Chair recognizes District Five Councilman Cory Reeves.
Yes, I just wanted to take this moment of special privilege, uh, as I do see in the audience, uh, a Purple Heart recipient, Mr. Paul Baldwin. And so I would like to acknowledge him as, uh, he is a member of District Five, so. Two, two. Where's the other one? Would y'all please stand up? That's why we do it, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Recognize you too, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, all of, all of you standing and not for your service. Uh, we will have council comments in the next section. I didn't know that's where, where you were going. All right, um, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote to, to approve the resolution. Councilmember Row. Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Williams Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is listed as item four under Agenda Items. It's an ordinance to amend Section one dash three zero one zero, Chapter three, Mayor and Council Title One Administration regarding the compensation and expenses for the mayor and council members and for other lawful purposes. This is the second reading.
All right, uh, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve for the request approval of ordinance regarding compensation and expenses for the mayor and council.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
All right. The Chair recognizes Dr. Rowe.
Okay, um, I don't think I had one, but this is consistent with what we've talked about, a twenty dollars an hour compensation. And so I guess this would give the City Manager the direction with the pay-in-class study, which again was done in 2019. So those are just my general comments. It brings everybody on par with the, with the changes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes District Two Councilwoman Gums.
Yes, um, with this, uh, in 2019, I believe, was the first time we actually, um, went to, uh, request, um, an increase to mayor and council. And that was actually, um, based off of the increase that was done through the pay-in-class study. And at that point in time when we, it was discussed, we talked about doing it incrementally. Um, and here we are, four years later, we have to do this in an election year. So that is one of the reasons as to why it is in front of you as of today. Um, but that is the reason why, because we did in 2019, um, say that we would increase, uh, incrementally and we're still not even at the threshold of where we, um, were slated to be in 2019. So I'm pretty sure once the current study comes back, it'll show that, you know, there may be a significant additional increase, but at this point in time, the, the mayor and council is, um, complying with the 2019, um, pay-in-class study. So I just wanted to kind of add some color to a lot of stuff. I've seen some comments on Nextdoor, um, it's been four years and as we talked about, even with the, in this budget, everything is increasing, gas prices, inflation, everything. Um, and I don't know what person would be on a job for four years without getting a promotion or at least an increase, even if it is just two dollars. So, um, I, I think that a lot of these council members, they do work extremely hard, um, and that, you know, the money is available. So, you know, we're going to try to see what we can do as far as moving forward. So just wanted to add a little color to, um, why we are in this position. Thanks.
All right. There are no further comments. We can vote and take two minutes before this next meeting. Oh, there are? Okay. You're in the queue? All right. Uh, the Chair recognizes District Four Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. This is difficult for me. And the reason why it's difficult for me is that I agree with Councilmember Gums, we all work extremely, extremely hard as council members. You know, I don't govern by social media. And I don't govern for votes. But what I do try to govern is to follow my conscience. We have. We have been pushing back tonight against giving some residents a break in their taxes. And yet, we are okay, which I am, of giving, having a twenty dollar minimum wage and we are now voting to give ourselves an increase. And yes, I agree, who would be on the job for four years without getting an increase? I get it. But the fact of the matter is, if we have a city and we have seen inklings of it since City Manager, um, Subedan has been here, that we can get better, we can work more efficiently so that council members do not have to work as hard as we have to work. I drive the biggest car here. I drive a Suburban. I have the largest geographic district. That I have to go from end to end to see my constituents or to attend meetings. So yes, it's costly. But I just do not think right now at this point that I can support us getting an increase. I, I, I can't do it. I cannot do that knowing fully well that the temperature of this council seemed to be that we do not even want to consider rolling back that military. I can't do it. That's all I got to say.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Reeves, District Five.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Madam Subedan, I believe we spoke this earlier and it says, uh, if this so shall pass, uh, that the compensation and expenses for the council when it comes to the fifth district, to take that and put it into a budgetary fund so it can be used for the constituents instead of coming to the seats. And so, um, I believe we still had to work to them out with finance to make sure that that can occur. So. Well, I'm asked a question and I would love to hear from my attorneys and our, and our City Manager, uh, they can, uh, effectuate that so very well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Attorney?
That'll be a, a opinion I'll give later, not on.
All right, Madam City Manager?
Hi, it's a legal. I think that requires legal review. I mean, if, I think if you felt that strongly about it, you could donate back. If that was your desire, that's your personal choice and you're right.
All right. Seeing and hearing, no further. Oh, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Willis.
I, I just wish, you know, um, everybody has a right to deliberate and feel how they feel. Um, but this was done in 2019 and Mayor, you were a council member at the time when this was done. And, um, I just would like to reiterate what Councilmember Gums said. You know, the council opted not to maximize what was recommended that this council should get. We decided to do it incrementally. Unfortunately, you know, it gets politicized because the only way you could increase wages is if it is in a election year. So next year is not an election year, so we could not increase our wages. We would have to wait until 2025 to increase wages again. And then the compensation study that we are currently under is probably going to come back and say that we should be getting paid more than this. And, you know, um, and I want to give, you know, uh, recognition to one senator who didn't support us becoming a city and that was Senator Tate. She was the only one that went to the well and argued that City of South Fulton salaries should have never been as low as it was. That our salaries should have been in concert with other cities. And so, um, I support this because we have data to support, this is where we should have been two years ago. And this is not only going to increase the council, it will increase the mayor as well. And this is, this is based off data, a compensation wage and study that was done in 2019 and we are now in 2023. And I just would encourage anybody who does not feel that they should receive an increase to do what Councilmember, uh, Reeves said he's going to do and he's going to donate his money back to his district. Thank you.
All right. Hearing, all right, we're, we're a little over time, so we're going to go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote now. Mr. Clerk, would you, uh, call the vote?
I'm in the queue.
The Chair recognizes District Seven Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to reiterate what Councilwoman Willis had said, um, that we.
Could you speak? I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
That we can only do this during an election year, but additionally, since I've been on council and I've attended, um, Georgia Municipal Association trainings, what I have found, um, that's really interesting and I think that the audience should know this, is the city of South Fulton is a major city, major, major city in the state of Georgia. So much that our individual districts are larger than cities, the majority of cities in Georgia. Um, when I got elected in December, eighteen thousand people were in my district and the district continues to grow, even though we've gone through redistricting. So I do want people to understand that as we work to make sure that we provide municipal services, um, answer people's questions, put on town hall meetings, do community service projects, um, we run many cities individually. Um, it takes a lot of our time, um, it's, it's extremely overwhelming at times. And so, uh, to put that in context, again, it's a big job. We're doing it and we have been modest from what I have seen prior to my coming. We've been modest at the compensation level that the council has operated under. That's my comment. My you.
All right, we're, 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 we're over time. I see people coming in for the four o'clock meeting in the, in the zone. We've got some other things to get to. So, uh, if there are no other questions, comments, concerns, queries, illusions, disillusioned, hallucinations, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote. The motion was to approve the ordinance for a second read and approval. Roll call, Councilmember Row?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
No.
Councilmember Reeves?
Nay.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Affirmative.
That motion was approved for the two.
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, just, we'll do a show of hands for adjournment.
Record that is unanimous. We are adjourned at four oh seven PM.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and call to order our four o'clock meeting.
Mayor, can we have a five-minute break, a laboratory break? If you don't mind, please.
Okay. Uh, we do have a, just, just to be clear, we do have a work session and a, we don't really have a zoning.
No zoning.
No zoning. All right, so, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we don't really have any zoning cases tonight and we're going to take a, we're going to be realistic. We're going to take, um, a twelve-minute break.
Yes.
Until four twenty. So.
So I'm gonna get home early tonight?
Yes.
Oh, thank God. You're doing good, Mayor. Keep going.
Mr. Hammond, are you ready? All right, we are live. Welcome back to Welcome All Parks. Center here at four two five five Will Lee Road in the beautiful city of South Fulton. We are going to begin our four PM work session now. We have some exciting topics to cover, from the arts to, uh, some other things we're going to be reporting on. I know some people have had questions about, uh, Merck and some of our facilities, so I'm sure you're going to cover that. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
It's a roll call for the August eighth work session. The Honorable Catherine Froul, District One.
Yes, present.
The Honorable Carmenita Gums, District Two. The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three. The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Ford.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown stepped out, and the Honorable Lynda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum?
All right, please sound the first item.
First item is City Manager, uh, reports. Be presented by the interim City Manager, Sharon Subedan.
Thank you. Um, so we are turning in the report in, um, in your packet and incorporating both the status of finance. Um, I did not do the traditional, um, budget year-to-date in the, um, City Manager's report. Instead, I gave you an update on the status of the work that is being done, um, around our finances. We're making a lot of progress and, um, expect to be fully engaged in the audit process here. Um, the portal is open. We've actually started that work. And, um, because today was focused on the budget, we quite honestly didn't think it was, um, that relevant to give you an update over last month on the year-to-date expenses. There's, very little has changed. Um, the Public Works report is provided in its entirety for you and gives you the status of Public Works projects. And city initiatives aligned with this, with the strategic plan are also in that report. The change in the meeting, um, council meeting scheduled proposition is a presentation that, um, we will have for you, and, um, that is the next item. Unless you have any questions, hopefully you all got the report in advance and, um, and have any potential questions for me.
Oh, while, I'm going to give council a minute to get their questions together. Just because it came up during the intermission, could you just give an update on Merck Miles and the Welcome All transfer station so people can know how they can or cannot access or use those stations?
Um, so the status of Merck Mile is we are reimagining how we, um, how that has been run for fifteen years. And the bid spec has been finalized, it's being reviewed, and should be out on the street this, this week. We are looking for an operator that will, um, operate it on a cost-share basis with the city, um, because we realize there's some real opportunity there to provide the service to our residents and for the city not to have to subsidize that service because of the other revenue they're, they're able to generate there. So that is in process. In the meantime, um, partly spearheaded in District Four, we, um, are doing bulk, um, waste pickups in every district. And, um, through your individual newsletters, that information will go out, and residents are able to come, bring items to that, including recyclables. And we've also partnered for shredding events, um, to happen, uh, at some of the, or I think everybody has asked for a shredding event to happen in the district. So that information is being pushed out. That's kind of our interim solution, and we are continuing to work with Waste Pro on perfecting our bulk waste pickup as well. Um, we learned after the fact from our residents that Welcome All, um, the private Welcome All facility does not do recycling, and so we realized that is a real, um, um, hole in our service provision, which is why we're doing the recycling along with your individual district, um, programs.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sure we'll hear more about all of these district events in our council comments. Uh, the Chair recognizes District Four, Councilmember Sebastian. As a reminder, everyone else, we have switched over in the queue if you're trying to get in the queue. Go ahead, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Madam City Manager, I just wanted to thank you guys for implementing these bulk and recycle programs, and to my colleagues for agreeing to spread them across the city. I'm not sure if I missed this, but do we have any tentative timetable on Merck Miles reopening?
So it has to be advertised for a minimum of thirty days, and our goal is to be able to get that back in front of you, um, at the last, probably in the, late, we should have an answer late September. Um, don't know if we'll be able to make the September twenty-second meeting, so it may be the first meeting in, in October, but we'll have a report for you on it.
So it's not coming back online as quickly as we had assumed the last time, I think we met on that special call meeting. Um, I don't know if every council district is going to do one of these programs. Might we consider, after we've been through the districts, to have a collection point at Merck Miles, even if it's reduced hours and for residents only? Because I'm suspecting even as we go through these, the last one I saw was for Council District Three. I haven't seen any for Seven. I haven't seen any for District One yet. And Four and Two are finished, and I believe Six is up this weekend. So is that something that we can look into since it's probably taken a little longer than we anticipated? We can just make it for residents only. We don't have to take the business things.
The challenge is, is what to do when people show up? Because what we learned is, or what we have learned, is there are a number of people who use the facility who are not city residents. And so it's what to do when somebody shows up with their truckload of, of waste. And, um, what we're trying not to do is have the attendants get into, you know, confrontation with a citizen who's just trying to drop off their stuff. And so we'll evaluate it and determine what resources we're going to need to be able to make that work. Um, I am really trying to push to get you a permanent solution, but we will look at everything, just like we're doing with the, the bulk sites and, um, making sure those are, the information is made available to everybody so they know when those are happening.
Oh, sanitation map, we'll take care of that problem, but we'll have to basically have the wherewithal of putting people's information in as they show up. And before, before I forget and I give up the mic, um, just want to thank, um, Don Thompson for putting that, to help to put that together. Um, I know that it was a little short notice and some pressure came along with it, but I just want to thank everyone who, him and everyone else who worked to make that happen. And, um, the folks who did stuff like the Flyer, Cave One and others, um, for making those things happen, because as we see, they're, um, they are well-needed right now at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian. The Chair recognizes District Seven, Councilwoman Pritchett.
Thank you for recognizing me. Uh, Ms. Subedan, um, I don't see it here, but it's a hundred sixty-eight pages, so I may have missed something. I have asked a few different times about the public safety complex over at Jackson Music, and, um, I was asking the status of where it is now because it seems that other districts are having these bulk waste collection days. And I was told, I was looking at wanting to have the same at Jackson Music, but they said that it was being prepped for construction, um, for the design implementation or something, and I'm just following up on that to get clarity.
I don't think we're there yet with that. And I know that there, the actual music store site is being renovated. I'm not sure what that-
That's probably what I'm asking for in an update.
Sure. I don't know that would prevent you from doing what you need to do or want to do, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizes, thank you, District, uh, Two, Councilwoman Gums.
Thank you, um, for recognizing me. I think you have answered, um, a lot of the questions regarding Merck Road. Um, but what we kind of, as I see, because I've been policing, you know, Merck Road, if I see people riding around with a whole bunch of trash on the back of their truck, I'm following them behind them to make sure that they're not dumping, and I've actually stopped a few, um, so I, I do want to figure out the communication and how we amplify it and getting it out to, um, not just our residents, but also the people that have, you know, used this facility. Because I, I, I still see minimal, um, communication in regards to that, and I just want to know how we effectively communicating, also with the Welcome All Transfer, uh, Center. Have we worked out any negotiations for South Fulton residents? Because I continuously hearing about, you know, a cost so much for us to, um, you know, dispose of our waste over there as well. So I, I would like to hear your recommendations as far as communication in regards to that.
Well, we've pushed out information about alternate sites. You know, there is no negotiating with them at this point. Um, and so our goal is to try to get our site back online and provide an alternative. Um, and so that's where we've been focusing our attention, but they're not willing to, willing or able to reduce a, um, provide us with a reduced rate for our residents.
Okay. Um, in, in the meantime, are we able to have more bulk? Um, I don't know how much one of these costs. I know we held a very successful one in District Two last weekend. How, how much does it cost, and are we able to, uh, continue to implement those throughout the district until we're able to get Merck Mo, Merck Miles back online?
I can find out. It's, it's not terrifically expensive, but if we do a lot of them, it'll add up. Um, but we're also not paying Merck Miles, so, you know, there's some funding there.
So it kind of balances out. Um, I think one of the areas too, if, you know, once we do, we come back online, if there's something that we can, uh, promote to the seniors, I think they're one of the ones that are constantly being, um, left out as far as not receiving appropriate communication because, of course, they don't have access to internet or social media, that kind of stuff. So if there's a way that maybe we can do a mail-in or postcard or something of that nature. Um, and I think too, we, we did, um, these bins, trying to get these bins up off the street, right? Because y'all know that's my, my biggest thing right now, is trying to get these bins up off the street. And we've tried, um, I think we've collected quite a bit for GFL, but what about the other, um, waste providers that we had in our community before? Um, I'm still seeing a lot of, uh, bins that are still there. And then also too, of course, Waste Pro has their old bins that are still in residents' yards as well. So how do we fix this?
So it's, it's slow and painful, um, but-
Painful.
It's slow and painful. Um, but in reality, we are at the point now where we're just going to have to pay, um, to get them removed. And so we're trying to get as many removed by the old providers as possible. It is their property. They are required to remove it. But at some point, you get to a place where we're just going to have to bite the bullet and pay a vendor. But we need to do it in concert. First, we need to get the information out, and we need to do it in concert with Waste Pro. Because what's happening is sometimes people are putting out that second cart filled with trash, and that's the challenge. If the cart is filled with trash, the vendor that only picks up empty carts is not going to be able to accommodate it, and we don't want to waste that resource. So we're going to have to essentially dump the cart and pick it up at the same time. So that's going to be a cost to us. We're trying to get everything that we can get off with the vendor, but whatever is left, we're going to have to pay to get it removed.
So, so is our staff also, um, picking up those carts as well? So are we doing like small operations to get those carts?
We have, and Public Works, you know, thank you so much for approving that twenty dollars an hour. Those are the individuals that are running out there when you send us a request or we get a request, and we can't get the vendor to pick it up, they're running out there and putting it in a backup pickup truck, you know, and, and helping us out because the vendors on, the pre, the old vendors are non-responsive. And so as, as we get those complaints come through at our individual, um, the Public Works crew has been really good about getting out there and picking those up.
Okay. Um, and also in the report, I just want to, um, as you all know, there was a tragic incident where we lost the officer for Atlanta APD, um, at Butner and Camp Creek. And, um, that has been one of the projects that have been on our radar for, since we became a city. And, um, I had a, a meeting with the state today, and, uh, there are some things that was, uh, certainly concerning that was shared, um, on their end as far as what we have not done in the city. However, there are some things that have not been done on their end as well, so, um, but where are we with that? And this is just for me to put it on the record, because I know, you know, I've shared with the residents how we have been advocating, um, for this particular intersection as far as the speed, reducing the speed, because what I've also shared is that if you've ever traveled from Enin Road or on Butner Road from the city of Atlanta into the city of South Fulton, um, those speeds from Atlanta start at twenty-five, and as soon as you cross over into the city of South Fulton, they're forty-five. Um, and we've been trying to get these, uh, speed reduced on those, um, corridors, because we've had quite a bit of tragic accidents, um, there. Where, where are we with that? Um, and then maybe Attorney Hyman, you can answer that question. Sorry to put you on the spot. Um, but we need to get that done sooner than later as far as trying to reduce those speeds because in, just particularly on Enin and, and Butner, coming, as you're heading to Camp Creek, you're coming down a hill. So if you're going twenty-five and you see, hey, now it's forty-five, and then you hit that blind spot speeding, it oftentimes is, is not a good. Um, so I, I just trying to figure out what we can do to kind of move this process along and reduce the speed. I know that's a short-term solution, but what else can be done?
I think we're going to have to get back to you on that, um, especially on the speed. Um, it's a major, a major connector, and so, um-
Are we able to get more solar speed signs, um, to help with, you know, slowing traffic down a little bit? I know we did have some of our, um, police officers, uh, in the room with us as well, just trying to figure out ways to slow down the speed, um, so we can preserve lives that travel through our city.
So first of all, let me say, it's a, it's a tremendous loss. Anytime somebody loses their, their life, especially on a traffic fatality, it's very tragic. Um, so I'd like to circle back with the chief and with the Public Works Director and be able to bring you a true status update. I wasn't able to attend that meeting today, and so I'll circle back with you and figure out where we are exactly on that. And I'll provide it in my next report or at our next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The Chair recognizes District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. I'm seeking clarification. Did the RFP go out for Merck Miles yet?
I don't think it's actually on the street yet, but the, um, the scope of work is complete. I wanted to, I wanted to review it, because the first submission was pretty much reiterating what we had before, and I directed the staff to go in a different direction, as I had shared with all of you, I wanted to go in a di- different direction. So I rejected the first submission, and it's been resubmitted, so they should be able to move forward with it.
So in that case, it has to be out for thirty days, and it hasn't even gone out on the street yet, so we're looking at, realistically, Merck Miles not coming online until possibly October. So I am in favor of, if we can't sustain doing this every week, the bulk and recycling pickup, that we, uh, consider doing something short-term, because the dumping is getting, um, more frequent and egregious. And all we're doing is going to have to put more resources into getting staff to, uh, clean up the, uh, the illegal dumping. And it's, it's happening more frequently throughout the city. And so, um, I just, you know, I, it's, we're in early August now, we're talking about, I just don't know if it's going to be feasible for us to continue to do this every week or whether or not it's just feasible for us to go ahead and do a temporary contract and get somebody to operate Merck Miles.
I, I don't think that's going to be possible. It, it'll take longer to do that than getting the, um, getting the RFP back. If we get no response, then we can, you know, modify and try to get some, um, someone in temporary, but I don't, I don't really recommend that you try that.
Well, what are we going to do about recycling? Um, the contractors that are dumping stuff in on our, on our side of our roads and streets, I mean, that's a long time to wait for October. So are we, are you sure we're going to be able to continue to do this weekly free bulk and recycling pickup?
We can do it.
Okay. Um, the other thing, I have a question about this. When is the Solid Waste Assistance Program application going to be posted online? Because I went to, the mail, the, the bills have gone out, the link that's on the back of the bill, I went and put in that link today. of the bill, I went and put in that link today, it takes you to the sanitation website, but the application isn't there. And I'm sure many of us are getting a lot of calls about that. And.
Yes, so we, on our website, and we told everybody the 14th. The reason for that is we didn't, we were told the bills weren't going to go out to the 15th. So it went out earlier than we anticipated. We will get, the only thing that's really missing is the link to the actual application. We have the, the email address already set up. The criteria is the same as the rent and mortgage assistance. We've identified a vendor. So we are well on the way, but we will have everything up on the 14th.
Okay. And for the recycling and bulk pickup for District Three, I just would ask that you all plan to have a lot of participation because I did send out a mailer to my whole district. So, and it went this week, so I'm pretty sure on the 19th, you're going to have heavy participation. All right. Thank you.
All right. The Chair recognizes District One Councilwoman Dr. Rowe.
Thank you. I heard a lot of the comments from my colleagues and I actually have a suggestion. I don't think it's sustainable to keep doing these jump-around recycling days. Is it possible for us just to do it on Saturdays until we get to the point where it's back online? That way it's a consistent place, people are already familiar, and when it comes back online, that's where they're going to go anyway. It's not open, you know, six days a week, but at least on Saturdays for half a day like it was this past Saturday, at least we could communicate that across the board. That way, no matter who needed to recycle at what point, they know they can go. I mean, I shared, Councilwoman Gums, in my newsletter, her upcoming date because I have received calls. But it would be easy if we could just say Saturdays from nine to one or nine to two, you can go and you can recycle. That's a thought, if we could work that out. And then one of the things that I noticed, of course, that facility needs a little maintenance over there. I went over there Saturday and so I know we may have some period of time where we may need to shut down before we bring it back online just for the maintenance of Merck Miles. But I think a solution like that could, could help. And then finally, on bulk day pickup, a lot of our residents are looking for those items to be picked up on their bulk day. And after, my understanding is it could be a couple of days after that, that that happens. We need to communicate that because I, I started getting, I get, I already know, on Monday, I'm going to be bombarded with requests about bulk pickup after that. So if we could communicate that, hey, you put them out on bulk days, it could happen a few days after depending on how much volume is on the street. I think that needs to be conveyed to the public. Because I'm spending a lot of time trying to make sure people, you know, make sure you all have the request to pick up bulk. And it's, a lot of people putting out, and I'm sure it's because Merck Miles is also not available, so that's adding to it. It's not a normal flow of what would be on the street.
Right. What we're planning to do is a complete solid waste mailer, kind of a front and back. Driving here today, I noticed that on Old Fairburn, everybody except one person had their trash can turned the wrong way. And so for anybody listening, the wheels need to face the street. If the wheels face the street, when it's picked up, when it's put back, the lid automatically closes, but people have them turned every which way. So we take responsibility for that. We have not communicated well enough. And so we're going to do a whole mailer on everything solid waste to include the reminders about bulk waste. We'll cover the, the billing, the swap, give people an update on Merck Miles, but we're going to do a, a citywide mailer. It's been July, August, July, August, it's been two months. So it's time for us to kind of go back to the citizenry and give them a full update on kind of all things solid waste. So we'll be getting that out here shortly.
I, I do want to follow up just first because you mentioned this mailer. I, I've failed to ask, but there is money for a quarterly newsletter in our budget for next year?
Have to check with.
Okay. Let's, let's, that's, because I think that would just be huge, these, these kind of quarterly updates would be great. And Councilwoman Gums, thank you so much for your activism. However, please be careful.
Right.
We want you, we want you here at all the meetings to come. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next. I'm sorry, go ahead. The Chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Willis for the second time.
Thank you. This is the last. City manager, I've been getting a lot of calls and complaints about backdoor service, curbside service where residents, seniors are saying that the, they're having problems with Waste Pro actually doing the curbside service. Waste Pro is telling them they have to actually pull their can out to a certain, to a certain place in order for them to pick up curb, their cans. And I got a call from a senior today, she has MS, and then Waste Pro told her she had to actually pull her can to the front before they came up to get her can. I got another complaint from a senior where she's actually having to pay her nephew to like bring her can to the place. Waste Pro is telling them they need to bring her can in order for her to get curbside service. And that's not what we, that's not curbside service. So if you could please have that addressed, I would greatly appreciate that. And I'll send you the contact numbers of those seniors who's experiencing that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
We have one additional presentation under City Manager Staff Reports, say Workflow Process and Council Meeting Schedule Presentation. And this was developed by the interim city manager in conjunction with the city clerk.
Can you bring that up for me? So last work session, we talked about the possibility of changing the structure of your meetings and to make them a little bit more robust, a little bit more efficient, and help the staff to move items along. Next slide. So we have a proposition. Clerk and I met and we hashed out what we thought might work for you and work for the citizens and work for staff. And so the first thing is we're not proposing to change the day or the time of your existing meetings. And we're also not proposing to change the day or the time of zoning meetings. What we are proposing is that the first work session of the month focus on staff reports, similar to what we have today. And after zoning, there would be a short regular meeting with a consent agenda and first and second readings. Next slide. The second meeting of the month, our proposition is that that focus would be on council presentations. So presentations that you want to see from subject matter experts in the community. And they would be able to come in and our regular meeting would not have zoning, it would follow the work session. And that's where you would be able to do your proclamations, have a consent agenda, and again, first and second readings. What this does is give us some opportunities to move items along more quickly instead of it taking, you know, we, we looked at how long it takes for an item to get from work session. If it requires, or it's legislation that requires a first and second reading, sometimes it can take up to three months to be approved. And this would allow us to move things along more quickly. But partnered with this change, we had two thoughts. One is I've looked at your legislation and you have a lot of legislation that gets pushed through the system, gets approved, and then just sort of falls into the abyss. And then a year or two later, you're like, what happened to this legislation? We passed the legislation for, fill in the blank, and either nobody knows about it, the staff has changed, and/or it's, you know, we become, overcome with events and it's not being addressed. So one thing that we would like to do in concert with the change is to connect every piece of legislation to a staff member who I would assign and to a department. So whether, regardless of the type of legislation proposed by council, but it flows through a department who understands the legislation, takes ownership for it, you would still be the sponsor, but there would be an implementation person and department on staff. So legislation doesn't get passed and then forgotten. The person and the department responsible would be, would be essentially required to ensure that the legislation is implemented. Next slide, please. And the second part would be the same way. So when you have a presentation that you want to have come before council, it gets connected to a staff member and a department. So as an example, the presentation today on the arts, the Public Art Commission, it would be connected to the, to the Department on Cultural Affairs. And in this instance, it's being connected to Ms. Saladia Avani, who will make sure that the, the legislation and any or changes are actually implemented. It said if, if nobody is responsible, then nothing really gets done. So it's really important to connect both the things that you bring, whether it's legislation and/or a presentation, with somebody, some department on staff who's responsible for delivering the results. And so what this would mean for you is when you want a presentation to be made, early in the process, we're notified of that, we get with them, we understand what it is they're presenting, we ask questions on, in terms of how that will be implemented in our space. And so when you hear that presentation, staff is essentially already on board and understands what it is that the presenter is bringing and how we would implement it in our, in our system. It also helps us to understand the fiscal impact and the operational impact of the presentation being made. So it's, it is not a significant shift because same date, same time as what you're accustomed to. Will require a little bit more discipline on everybody's part to make sure that we're keeping things at our forefront and moving and making sure that we are connected so that we can understand how it is we can carry out your wishes and implement on your behalf. The other thing we're going to ask is on the work session format right now, there are very specific things that are asked for. And so what we're, what we would ask is that we look at that legislation and potentially make some changes there on what's asked for on, on every work session, especially if we're having two work sessions a month. So more to come on that. You passed legislation to change the city manager's spending limit, but the legislation still calls for a report on everything over $25,000. Is that still your desire or do you now want it for the things that you're actually going to see and approve, which is everything over $100,000? And so these are really kind of ideas that we're putting out here to get your feedback to see if this is something you'd be willing to try. Next slide, please. The other big change is implementation of Civic Plus. I don't know that we'll be ready to implement it for council in October, but what we'd like to do is implement it fully in-house, in, per staff in October. So all agenda items essentially flow through us in the format that Civic Plus intends. And then, once we get it into a good rhythm, we're thinking first of the year that council would be able to start to use Civic Plus in these meetings for tracking your agenda items as well as for voting. And the last thing I want to suggest is currently at a regular meeting, you read every resolution and ordinance in its entirety after the clerk has read it. I think that you were advised to do that in the past. Other places use the phrase, "I offered the resolution and asked for its adoption." You get a second, you take a vote, and the resolution is passed. So just something to think about, I actually timed the, the meeting and saw how long it takes for just the process of reading through, not even including the time for comments. And every time you read, and some of the legislation is complicated with a lot of numbers and commas and periods, and it's, it's very time-consuming. And I'm not sure it's really adding any value, especially for the public. Once the clerk has read it, you know, quite honestly, they're looking to see how you're going to debate on it and how you're going to vote on it. And last slide is just our workflow that we will go through once we implement Civic Plus on our side. Every agenda item will follow a specific pattern. It'll go to finance, to, to the city attorney, to me, it may go to HR. But it will be a virtual workflow which allows for more accountability on our side as well. And, and part of what I'm trying to do is make sure the deadline is met. We have reinstituted agenda review on a Monday morning to make sure that we meet the agenda deadlines for Friday. Corey, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered everything like the interim city manager stated. We met a couple of times on this in terms of the workflow as well as some other process improvements and definitely support the recommendation as presented. It will take, you know, a change in how we've normally done things, particularly with the introduction of legislation as well as, you know, getting it on the agenda. So wholeheartedly support it and we look forward to full implementation and your acceptance at, at the appropriate time.
All right. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Madam City Manager and Mr. City Clerk, thank you. I, I just want to ask a follow-up question about that. I feel like we have been waiting for Civic, rec, Civic Clerk.
Civic Clerk.
For some years.
At least a year and a half.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I, and I did just want to explicate a, a bit further your presentation, Madam City Manager. So I'm just, we're not ready to do this for the next council meeting, but I just, just to give a timeline. So our fourth Tuesday council meeting is, and we're not doing it this month, but just so you can look at your calendars and, and I don't, I don't know if it was playing. Our fourth Tuesday council meeting is August 22nd. I now meet one week, we used to do it like on a Wednesday or Thursday, I now meet one week prior on August 15th to set the agenda. If we were to head in this direction, the city manager's meeting would be one week before that, which would be Monday, August the 7th. So yesterday, she would have met with staff, they would have made sure that everything being proffered had a department head attached for implementation before it even came to me for my agenda, my agenda approval meeting. So hopefully that will make that go a little bit faster. And after I approve the agenda, which has been pretty much approved by the city manager making sure that things are attached, then we would have that agenda out much earlier. That would mean though, that it would push the deadlines for submissions of new ordinance and resolutions up. However, if we're doing voting twice a month, if you miss one deadline, you'd be able to catch the next one.
And we did meet yesterday. And we did meet yesterday. We met yesterday.
Awesome. Um, so we, we did, you all did meet. So we're gonna, we're going to start rolling it out slowly, even though it's, it's, it's not fully passed by council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Also would like to offer that, um, to implement this, uh, we are contemplating a ordinance change, so it would be two reads, um, so that's why we kind of targeted October. Um, so, um, hopefully, you know, if it's favorable, um, we'll be able to have a first read at the August 22nd meeting.
Okay, perfect. Uh, and you, and, and as you, as you said, it won't be implemented till October, but you'll see some of that, uh, framework being put into place. And with that, I will, um, open the floor for any questions. The Chair recognizes District Two Councilwoman Gums.
So first, um, I'm loving the direction this is going in. Um, I was just sharing with my colleague that this, this feels good, um, the direction that is going in. And I think also too, Mayor, this goes back to your point of kind of slowing the process down a little bit, um, just so we're able to make sure that a lot of stuff that we are wanting to see is implemented effectively. My question is, um, I guess what would a legislation department look like? Are we adding more staff to help us or are we going to use the existing staff that's already within our law and clerk's department? No additional staff would be needed to move this legis? So, so who's going to be managing the implementation process? I guess that's me trying to understand it. So you, you'll be doing that?
So Corey and I together.
Okay.
Um, and so throw out an example, like any legislation.
Food truck.
Food truck. Do you mind if we use food trucks? So food trucks. Um, what we want to do, so we, we listened to Councilwoman Pritchett, she has explained what she wants to do with the food truck legislation. We have brought in the Economic Development Director and the Fire Director, Fire Chief to, who has expertise in this particular area. Um, and essentially, RD and Economic Development are going to be the owner. So we have gathered your comments, we have pulled together, um, the information that Councilwoman Pritchett is seeking to change, modify, add. Um, it's still going to, of course, go through the legal process, proper legal process. It'll still be in the portal and open to everybody's comments. We'll have the proper fiscal impact done, but at the, and we also need to see how it it matches and matches and meshes with what the state has passed. So when that legislation is done and approved and implemented, um, the Economic Development Department will be responsible for making sure that all of the pieces are done properly. So there's a big piece that's going to be in CDRA, um, making sure that our vendors understand. There's a piece that's going to be in Public Affairs. So what I'm trying to do is get us to work truly as a team, but there's got to be a point person, there has to be a captain on the team. And so in this instance, RD is the captain, but you got somebody who's a ball carrier, you got somebody who's playing defense, you got somebody who is the cheerleader, you got to have all of it working together to ultimately get to go, you know, game day. And so we're not asking for anything extra besides your support and your help with getting us to, to do this. And it's one of those things, whenever you improve a process, you learn things as you go along. And, you know, if there are tweaks we have to make as we go along, then we'll make those tweaks. But I envision that this will give you a better outcome for what you're seeking, and I think it'll make these meetings more efficient, where we're moving through things, giving you plenty of opportunity to have dialogue. But I'm also getting things approved that are low hanging fruit, that, you know, we have bids that are $110,000 that have to go through this process, and they go to a work session, but we got to wait two more weeks for it to get to, um, to approval. And so we're just trying to see how we can help departments move things along and not, um, not be delayed by the process.
So customarily, um, you know, a lot of our directors are overwhelmed. So how do we stay on, on task? Is there somebody that will partner with them to make sure that we stay on time as far as trying to move legislation through the process? Is it something that, I, I know that we'll say, oh, well, listen, you know, Economic Development's wheelhouse, but if we have like four or five grand openings and, you know, turning dirt, you know, that may not be a, a priority, even though it's a priority to the council. How do we continue to manage it to make sure that it's moving through the pipeline effectively?
So we'll, we'll establish some metrics around it. You know, if you get a piece of legislation, you have this much time to actually move it through, meet with the, with a council member, understand what it is and get it back. The other thing is legislative specialists can be very helpful to us. And that is inside of their, um, their job description to help move these things along.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gums. The Chair recognizes, uh, District Three Councilwoman Willis.
So just, just for clarification, are you saying that we will still have our meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday, but we will, instead of just having a work session and a regular session on second and fourth Tuesday, we will have a regular session to vote and a work session on Tues, on the second and fourth Tuesday?
So we'll have a regular, so the, the second Tuesday, the, the two meetings will essentially look very similar. It works, except the first meeting will have, if we have zoning cases, there will be the zoning meeting, which we will have to call.
Okay.
Um, and then followed by a regular meeting. What we will do is try to keep that regular meeting light, so that regular meeting won't have proclamations, for example.
Okay.
What we're really trying to do is consent agenda items and regular, um, consent agenda items and regular first call, I mean, first reads.
So proclamations will only be done on the fourth?
Just like it is now.
Okay.
So to the public, a lot of it will not, will be seamless.
Okay.
To staff, this will be very helpful to us to get things in front of you and approved so we can keep moving.
So for the workflow, will this workflow still, we will still use SharePoint?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Oh, so when we get rid of SharePoint, okay. Um, I just would ask, and I know if you need more staff, you'll tell us in your budget, during the budget process, but I just would ask, um, as Masuban said, this does, a lot of this stuff does fall in the wheelhouse of our legislative specialists, that's why they were called legislative specialists, because they're supposed to do research and do a lot of this stuff, um, on behalf of our constituents in every district. So I just think that we need to make sure that this training is a part of, um, the training that you may identify for them. They need training on this, the workflow, and also SharePoint. Thank you, Ayew.
Received.
All right, the Chair recognizes District Four Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Masuban, thank you for thinking through this process and hopefully it really, um, really helps us going forward, certainly being able to vote twice a, per month consistently will. Um, and this is for my colleagues on the DS here. Those, lots of times our meetings are long because of us. So I'm just saying, no matter the process that we put in place, we need to govern ourselves accordingly. And that's my challenge for us, to govern ourselves accordingly. And not let the hard work that you and your staff are doing, um, go to waste. So I look forward to us implementing the new process. And I also look forward to the training that we're going to give to our legislative specialists so they can help us with more, with more of this, um, type of work. Because you're correct, that's part of what they should be helping us to do. Okay? Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, before I, sorry, I, I had one thing, one more thing. The last council meeting, full council meeting that we had, and Mr. Mayor, this is for you, we had about five or six items that were on that agenda that were, we had to take time to vote on. There were unanimous votes that were vetoed. That also extend our council meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, my challenge to you is, you can, you have your veto power, you have your right, I don't want to take that away from you, you're the mayor. But I would just suggest to you, look, look at those items. Do we, do we need to have to take a seven to zero vote and bring it back to have another seven to zero vote in the future? Or is that just delaying work for the staff and quite frankly upsetting the council members because we have to deal with this several times and we shouldn't? Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? The Chair recognizes District Five Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Madam Masuban, for streamlining this process. We really appreciate you and thank you also too for investing in training for our specialists and our generals. And so, uh, as much needed, as I believe in that wholeheartedly, and, uh, I look forward to a future and better outcomes.
All right. Anyone else going once, going twice, don't see anyone else in the queue? All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think that completes the city manager's report. So that moves us to presentations. This is under item four on the printed agenda, is a continuation of a discussion from the last work session, uh, Public Arts Commission Hotel Motel Tax Funding. This was placed on the agenda by Mayor Khalid and the, uh, responsible department is the Cultural Affairs Department. And this evening, we, we do have the chairwoman of the, uh, Public Arts Commission, Ms. Myrna Fuller, as well as Ty Kelty, who, uh, serves as a member of the Public Arts Commission, and Solange Avini, who's the, uh, Director of the Cultural Affairs Department. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As, as they come forward, I will say, we're going to try this again. Chairwoman Fuller and Ms. Mays, uh, brought some items to my attention, uh, namely, there, there may or may be some issues, I'm going to let the experts, uh, discuss the, the ins and outs of motel, uh, hotel motel tax, but also just staffing for this Public Arts Commission. Some things were passed, some positions were created that weren't filled, and when they brought it to my attention, I wanted to bring it to the work session. And so I think that we are ready now with a more robust, uh, presentation. Thank you, Madam City Manager and Director of Cultural Affairs, Ms. Avini.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing me to present this report on the Public Art Commission. I'd like to make a correction, I am not the Director of Cultural Affairs, I am the Deputy Director of Cultural Affairs under the Parks Rec and Cultural Affairs Department. So thank you, Madam City Manager, for allowing me this time. We are ready to report on the Public Art Commission. Thank you, Mr. Adams. So the definition of public art, um, the common characteristics of public art, it is accessible, it's in the public realm, the community is involved, there's a public process, it includes public funding, and work may be temporary or permanent. Um, the function of the commission is to serve in advisory capacity to the mayor and the city council and the city manager, um, to increase support for the arts. The commission maintains a collaborative reporting relationship with the Department of Parks Recs and Cultural Affairs. Next slide, please. So our history, the Public Art Commission was created in 2018. Um, the commission began meeting in 2020. Each council member appoints one representative, the mayor's appointee presides as the chair, the commission meets the third Thursday of each month, and the Deputy Director of Cultural Affairs attends as the staff but has no voting power. So our governing, governing documents, uh, were written by the Public Art Commission, actually, the ordinance was written by council. Um, but our other governing documents are our policies and guidelines, we have completed a public arts master plan, um, and the steering committee was developed as a foundational body in 2022, that is the Public Art Steering Committee. Additional accomplishments include contributing to the Parks and Rec Cultural Affairs Master Plan, providing support, including securing sponsorship for the MLK Day, the Trammell Crow Bench Painting Project, approval of two public art projects, which would be the Sandtown mural and the Hamilton Boat Rock Roundabout Sculpture, facilitated the Sandtown Park mural and the artist selection, the public art orientation, um, we secured lunch for the sponsor and, secured a lunch, lunch sponsor, I'm sorry, and provided technical support for that mural. Uh, we also produced a landing page, which is wwwamorevibrantsouthfulton.com or SF.com. We also developed guidelines, application and processes for a juried art selection. We also have facilitated an open call for community volunteers and assembled a 38-member steering committee. We partnered with Fulton County to provide two public art training sessions for residents. We facilitated the Burdette Recreation Center mural project, which is currently in the design phase. Facilitated the Creole Paint by Numbers mural, which was completed in October of 2022. Um, facilitated the mini mural project at Creole Park for ages three to 12, and provided marketing, talent acquisition, and graphic design support for the Red Oak Art Festival, which we do every year. So this next slide is showing you what was, um, gained through our citywide public art survey. The survey went out to all seven districts, it was advertised by various means, social media, we had flyers printed, um, we conducted presentations on the public art program in collaboration with multiple stakeholders between August 2022 and December 2022. And local meetings were held with local organizations. Now in, this is very small and I apologize because we tried to fit a lot of information on this slide, but what you see here is a pie chart and a graph, and the graph shows you, and I should have brought my glasses up here, I apologize, but what it shows you is the categories that citizens wanted to see, um, which word best describes the type of public art you want to see around the city of South Fulton. A lot of the residents said beautiful, multicultural, colorful, and fun. Those are some of the highest ranking categories. So additional projects in the planning phase. The Red Oak District Board and Main Street Manager are currently in the planning phase in collaboration with local businesses for two murals that will appear on commercial buildings, as well as a mural on the basketball court at Delano Park. We're also working in collaboration with the Economic Development Department to develop an artist incubator program, which we'd like to launch in 2024. The Public Art Commission, Economic Development Department, and the CBB are currently collaborating on a community newsstand project, project. Newsstands will be painted by local artists and students and be filled with community newsletters featuring local stories and artwork. And here you can see, I'm sorry, can you go back to the, yes, there you can see a mockup of what those, um, newsstands will look like. Okay, so the next slide is discussing the Hotel Motel Tax. I think between the city manager and, um, the city attorney and, um, the Assistant City Attorney, we have figured out how the Hotel Motel Tax should be allocated to the Public Art Commission, um, so I don't think I need to go over this slide at all. I think it's, it's been, excuse me, it's been handled. So the next slide talks about the requested funds, just showing how much we worked with in 2022 and 2023 versus how much we are requesting for FY24. Um, the requested funds will allow us to launch programs outlined on the following slides and put mechanisms in place to secure funds from external source, external sources such as sponsorships, foundations, and grants. Um, we have the need to address critical issues facing our city, the need for economic development. the need for economic development companions, community revitalizations in a lot of our districts, facilities improvements and overall beautifications, provide and attract greater visibility for our city and improve the public perception of our city among residents and business owners and potential investors and visitors. So our first project is a Paint by Number, Numbers mural projects in District Two through Seven. A total cost of six murals and these fees include artist fees and materials. The second project would be the part-time public art coordinator, which would fall under the Department of Cultural Affairs. This part-time professional would provide administrative support to the Public Art Commission and serve as the conservator for the existing public art in the city. The third project would be the Utility Box Project slated for Districts Five through Seven, which would be ten boxes. And here you can see a mockup of what the boxes could potentially look like. The fourth project is a Fire Hydrant Project. We've specked out twenty hydrants from Fulton Industrial, Roosevelt Highway, O National Districts, One, Three, Five and through Seven. The fifth project is the Artist in Residence Space and the Public Art Coordinator Office. So we were in talks with the Economic Development Office to provide an Artist in Residence Space in the Red Oak District. And the potential sites would be the Red Oak Plaza Suite or the Red Oak Renaissance Center. Next slide, please. And the Sandtown Recreation Center mural. This is a mural we've been in conversation with for a long time with Councilwoman Raul from District One. And it might not necessarily be the John Lewis mural, it depends on what the citizens want. So we have done some surveys about what they want, so that's still in development. Next, we have the Roundabout Sculptures. We currently have the Roundabout in Boat Rock. But we're proposing one at Cliftondale in partnership with Councilwoman Gums. Our next project would be the Wonder Walls Pop-Up Program, which will take place at Wilkerson Mill and Burdette Parks, which would be Districts Four and Five. And so you can see some mockups of what those could potentially look like. Our next slide talks about our website design, social media and graphic design for our morevibrantsf.com. This is a dedicated public art program website design and maintenance. Social media profiles will be created and ongoing graphic design needs for marketing materials for all of public art throughout the city. And the last one is the Public Art Maintenance Fund, which is kind of self-explanatory. We have to maintain our public art in the city, otherwise it's going to crack and crumble. And we don't want to see our beautiful public art that we already have just go to waste. So this concludes my presentation. I am open for questions, comments, referrals, suggestions. Oh, I did skip one slide, I'm sorry. We did meet with council members to discuss their district priorities. We met with District One, oh, we continually meet with District One. We've had multiple meetings with District Two. We met with District Three on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three to discuss the Swordfish mural at Welcome All Park. We met with District Four on September fifteenth to discuss the Wilkerson Mill dugout mural. We've had multiple meetings with District Five, where we would discuss the Burdette mural, which is in the design phase. Multiple meetings with District Six. And that Creole Park mural has been completed. And we have not had a chance to meet with District Seven yet. But that is upcoming and we will be scheduling that meeting soon, Councilwoman Pritchett. So let us know when you are available so we can schedule that meeting.
Awesome. All right, I'm going to go through our queue here. The Chair recognizes District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
When was that? When was the meeting in District Three?
I believe I sent August fifteenth.
And what did we discuss?
The Sandtown mural, the Swordfish mural. I'm not, I'm sorry, not Sandtown, the Swordfish mural for Welcome All. August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
I don't recall, I know I've been talking with Ms. Subidan and Park and Rec about a mural. I recall having a virtual meeting early on, but if you say you did.
Yes, it was a virtual meeting, it wasn't in person. Yes, yes.
Um, I would like to, what, have you all discussed or had any conversations about the Cliftondale, the median, where we did the Roundabout? Residents are interested in the Cliftondale community of not necessarily something like Sandtown, but some type of identifier, marker in that Roundabout area.
I believe we have, nothing has been developed yet.
You have?
We have had discussions about it, yes, but we haven't developed anything for that Roundabout yet.
When were those discussions?
In previous meetings in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so I just would like to ask if we have any discussions around. I know I remember seeing an email from Mr. Robertson about some signage for that Cliftondale and Public Works. And then we asked, I asked that he reach out to the council members who represent that area before he moved forward with that signage, so we can make sure that we at least go to the Cliftondale Community Club. So if possible, can we make sure that we give that a sense of urgency? Because the residents in that area would love to see some type of identifier. I remember Public Works was saying we may not be able to do anything within that Roundabout, but we may be able to do things on the corners.
Derivative.
Because of safety reasons. And then Swordfish, I really would like for us to make sure that we focus on getting that done, especially while we're in the phase we are in now. That would be the best time to do it, so we won't have to shut anything down or interfere with any type of operations once they open back up.
Yes, I would like to circle back to find, actually, I'll just talk to Tanara to see where they are in the process. So the installation of that mural won't interfere with the work that they're doing.
Okay. And then you all work closely with the Red Oaks, so I mean, I'm pretty sure Caitlin does a real good job with that, so. All right, thank you so much for your report and your comprehensive and thorough report and all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The Chair recognizes District Four, Councilman, um, Councilman Sebastian, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for your presentation. My mic sounds a little low. I'm, thanks for having the mural for Wilkerson Mill Park. And like Councilmember Willis, this conversation happened a long time ago, and I am the oldest on council. So I will, I will tell you, I would put it over to my memory that I didn't recall this, although it is something that I know we have kind of talked about in passing, so thank you for getting that in. Something that I did talk about previously as well, that was not reflected here, is not reflected here. It's some sort of, some sort of artwork around City Grove Park as we are upgrading that work there. And then I, I won't take much more time, but I do want to schedule, I'll reach out to my appointee and have another meeting because I do have some other things that I've been working on with public art in mind. But I need to just communicate that into your group.
Yes, sir.
And then we can figure out the funding piece later. Thank you, thank you again very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes District Seven, Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
I have a question for Attorney Hyman. Did we pass, I believe recently we introduced a ordinance that dealt with all of the boards and commissions where they need to now select their chairs, where the chairs are not automatically appointed by the mayor. Is that, that sounds about right?
I can't remember the council meeting, but that ordinance did go through the council. The clerk could probably tell the exact.
Yeah, Councilwoman Pritchett, that would actually be on the agenda on August twenty-second for a second read and approval.
Okay. Thank you. How are you?
All right, any further questions, comments, concerns? Queries, illusions, disillusions, hallucinations, seeing and hearing none. I believe that we are at council comments. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will start in reverse order this time with District Seven, Councilwoman Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you everyone who's come out tonight for this council meeting. I want to say happy new school year to all the students that have returned to school, all of the teachers. I hope that you all have a safe and happy and very pleasant new school year. I'm very excited that we had two bookbag giveaways, back-to-school events over the last two weeks, where we gave out over two hundred backpacks, we gave out gift cards, we gave out food. We had a lot of fun and it was a lot of community engagement. So I thank our community sponsors that helped to put that together in District Seven. I also would like to announce that District Seven will be having the fir, their, our first international farmers market on August twenty-sixth. So we're looking forward to a variety of vendors with produce and spices and all kind of interesting things. And if you would like to become a vendor, if you would please contact my office at four seven zero eight zero nine seven seven zero seven or send an email to linda.pritchett@cityofsouthfulton.gav so that you can receive a vendor application. And there is no cost for, at this time, for the vendors that would like to participate. We're really excited about this and we look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you. District Seven, I mean, sorry, District Six, Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank everybody who came out to the District Six Back-to-School Carnival. We had very impressive response, very robust response. And we were, we have been able to give out about seven hundred and fifty backpacks to students at Love Tino and at Bethune and also other students who, you know, in other schools that came over in response to the outstanding work that the Friends of Creole did in working with me, with Megan and with Parks and Rec on putting the back-to-school carnival together. Friends of Creole is back, they are back in business. We are all very excited about that and we have some very exciting things upcoming that will be happening in Creole Park that we're working on. So as Rachel Maddow says, watch this space. We will be announcing those in the, in upcoming weeks. I want to remind residents of District Six that Saturday is going to be the bulk trash and recycle day in Creole Park from ten to two. Hopefully, everyone not only got the email that I sent, but they opened it and read it. But if you do have any questions, I have had some residents reach out to me with some questions. If you do have questions, please feel free to contact me and I will get you to the people who can answer those questions. I am, I am, to the extent that my name and my face are on it, I am not an expert in sanitation. And so I will refer you to those people who are heading up that initiative in the city. But please do come out and do not illegally dump your bulk trash and waste at, at the gates of Merck Miles. Please come Saturday and bring them to Creole so that we can collect and dispose of them properly.
Thank you very much. District Five, Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. I really appreciate that. I want to just let people know that we do our every Monday call from six-thirty to seven-thirty. However, this Monday, it will not be on Zoom for we will be live at Georgia Tech, the Kendada Building, three forty-five First Drive Northwest, Atlanta, three oh three one eight, for a special presentation. So again, that will not be on Zoom, it will be live at Georgia Tech Campus at the Kendada Building. Shouts out to those who came out and to my colleagues along the corridor for, and Madam Subidan, for assisting in the first ever graduating class with the introductory course in a trade in the nation. In the nation. And I'm going to keep driving it home, so it might not be, it might be minute to some, but it really is a big deal. And I just want to remind people that particular Friday, while they was receiving their certificates, that's the only area in the metro area that it did not rain. Facts. So, and the game was subsequently canceled, the championship game, and it was played the following Friday. And the young man who took advantage of it, who lives within the city boundaries of this city of South Fulton, played the championship game and he won. So he's really the MVP of the whole program. And so we just, that's, I championed that and I just, I'm proud of that. I'm absolutely proud of that. And so we was able to present them an opportunity. And that collaboration came from myself, Fax-A-Thrive, It's Electric, the ITT's Training Program School, and our director, Tanara Turner. And so collaboration wins championships. And to my colleagues who wants us to also celebrate Purple Heart Day and our senior citizens. And, you know, we're going to all come together with Taste of Sofu on August the twenty-fifth. Oh, we're going to make this a grand event and I hope that we can all just celebrate in our, our Purple Heart and our seniors. And so all in one day, August the twenty-fifth. And so, and finally, to those college students entering into their senior year of college, this is a historic class, of course, as this is the first class of graduating high school that didn't have a graduation for a COVID hit. So as these new leaders and coming into their senior year, we want to just champion you, we pray for you and we expect you to come back home and lead as it's a new day and time and y'all are the ones who are exposed to it first. And so to their graduating class in their senior year, we wish you the best of luck. And I want to say that I love you and you could do something about it, but why would you?
Yes, the Chair pointed privilege to Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did want to just make a general announcement because I know residents get very upset when they do not get instantaneous responses to their phone calls and their emails. I will be out of the office August the fifteenth through August the twenty-first. I'm leaving the state, I will not be available, I will not have anything on me but my personal cell phone and my iPad. So please email Megan if you need a response from me between August fifteenth and August twenty-first because the last time I tried to explain to somebody why they didn't get an instantaneous response, they were not very pleased that I did not get back to them as soon as they emailed. So please make note, you will not be able to reach me August fifteenth through August twenty-first. And if you try to reach me, you will not get a response. Let the church say amen.
Mayor Pro Tem has made her announcement, please govern yourselves accordingly. Next, District Four, Councilman J.C. Sebastian. Next, District Four, Councilman J.C. Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, feel like we need to pass the plate, but we'll see. Um, I just want to thank the resident of District Four that, um, I was really happy. I don't see a lot of dumping taking place in District Four. Maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong. But I was really, really pleased as to the response on our bulk, on our bulk and recycle day. Uh, we had three trucks. They told me that those trucks hold about thirty tons and they were this close of getting filled. So we probably collected about almost thirty tons in District Four. Um, we had a school supply giveaway. Um, I think we did three hundred and fifty bookbags. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for giving me some extras when folks called later on, said they didn't make it and they needed, needed a few more. So to that seven fifty, you can add another, what was it, ten or twelve, whatever it was. Um, our Fall Festival in D4 is coming up, uh, on nine twenty-three at Wilkinson Mill Park. Um, we're, we had a successful one in twenty twenty-two and we're looking to make it even bigger and better, um, this year. And I know there's lots of stuff is being mentioned tonight about our vets. And we are probably gonna do something different. I'm hoping to get my colleague's support once myself and Councilmember Reeves, our staff have been working on a proposal and we'll bring it before council. Um, hopefully, if not this month, then later on in, um, in September, so we can do something even bigger and better for our vets. All right, again, thank you, staff. Congratulations to our police and, um, fire. Awesome police night out. It was hot like Hades out there, but we've made it through. Um, and it was something that, um, I think a lot of the communities, the community around it, um, came out to. And for a city of a hundred and twelve thousand people, maybe it was the heat. But I thought that plaza could have been a little bit more packed. So again, I don't know if it's our, if it's our, um, ads that fall in short or promotions or whatever not. I know we all put it in our newsletters. Um, but we should try, if we can, to do a better job of promoting our events. Madam City Manager, you know, I'm having the conversation with you about that telephone, telephone notification, call and posting. I hope we can get something like that in place because many of the seniors who live in District Four, they don't know about this internet thing. They're not dealing with it, right? Um, and I know it probably happened all over the city. So once again, to our, um, police and fire department, awesome, um, police night out. And I'm looking forward to what we'll do again in twenty twenty-four. Thank you all.
I want to thank staff for helping us through two major events. National lineout is always well attended, but also the helping us break, come, bring back our Wolf Creek concert online. Um, it was well attended. I know we have to make some few internal changes, but for the most part, I think the residents had a very good time. And most importantly, everybody got home safe. Um, on August nineteenth, it will be District Three Recycling and Bulk Day here at Wilkemore Park. Um, residents, you should have gotten your postcard this week. If not, you will be receiving it this week. I have mailed you. Um, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Arnold and Park and Recreation Staff for helping me pull together an amazing event, Wakanda in the Park. We ended up bringing it inside and doing the viewing in the gym, which will probably, um, which has now led to us, uh, wanting to do quarterly, uh, movies in the park inside. And, um, I want to thank everybody who helped me pull together, uh, and give back to the community. We had who a lot of bookbag giveaways, um, and it's because I go, I meet people where they are. Um, and we did one at Camp Creek, I mean, we did one at Garden at Camp Creek in partnership with We All Value Excellence. We did one, um, at Freedom Park in partnership with police, the sheriff's office, um, the district attorney's office, and also our fire personnel. And we served over a hundred kids there. Uh, we did one last Sunday at Enin Church and we were able to serve all of the students in District Three there. And we also, I have one coming up. I'm working with Solid Rock Pentecostal Church on Washington Road. And tomorrow, um, I'll be going to the airport and participating in stuff in the plane. So there is no reason why kids should be going to school without school supplies and bookbags. And if they are in need of any school supplies or bookbag, please contact my office at Helen dot Willis at cityofSouthFultonGA.gov, or you can, uh, text District Three at four two eight two eight. Um, upcoming events in the city of South Fulton and District Three, uh, the Fifth Annual Yeek Festival. Dance Festival will be September thirtieth in partnership with Park and Rec. And then the Sixth Annual, um, October, October, um, Halloween Festival, which is huge here at Wilkemore Park, October twenty-eighth, in partnership with Parks and Rec and staff. Usually staff comes out, dress up. They do, uh, fire usually steals the show every year. Um, I think code enforcement won last year, um, but the year before that, fire stole the show.
Point of order, uh, Councilwoman Willis, uh, uh, there is a police officer in the corner that seems to feel the record, record might be different.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was police. I know it was. We had some good competition last year. It's usually really competitive. We had some competition last year, so I think it was police. I can't remember. But it's usually huge, big, a lot of fun, um, very community oriented. Give, it gives the, uh, departments a chance to come out and interact with the kids in the community. So it will be again this year, October twenty eighth. Uh, I am ending on, I would say, a celebration of life. Um, I want to send out my condolences and deepest sympathy to Mr. Bruce Moody. He is a leader in the Cliftondale community and has been a leader in the Cliftondale community for over thirty years. Um, he raised his three grandsons, um, here in the Cliftondale community and attended South Fulton schools. He lost his wife, um, on July thirty-first. And we want to send our deepest sympathy to him. The funeral will be tomorrow at Murray Brothers. And, um, I just want to say, you know, we all got to get there one day, but he has been very, he has been a dutiful husband in taking care of his wife during her long period of sickness. And, um, you, uh, you have my deepest sympathy, Mr. Moody. And if it's anything you need from me and my colleagues who also represent, uh, Cliftondale, um, we'll be the first to be there for you. Thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes District Two, Councilwoman Gomes.
All right. I'm gonna let her finish killing this bug. So District Three and District Four, while they're dealing with the, um, the bug situation. Um, first of all, it was an extremely busy, um, time in District Two last week. I've never seen so much activity, um, in my entire life. Um, we, uh, welcomed students back to school. Of course, you know, school started, um, at Westlake High School and Stonewall Tell as well as Cliftondale. We had ice cream trucks and welcomed parents, um, back to school. We also, um, ended this particular day with our plastic, um, showing, which we had a really, really good time. It was a very informative meeting, um, just showing the, the hazards to, um, using plastic. It was called Plastic Earth. Definitely if you missed it, um, we can provide that information. It can be seen on Tubi, which is one of my favorite, uh, applications. But, uh, it is called Plastic Earth and we had people come out and learn a little bit more about, um, the environment and ways that we can sustain it. And I will encourage, uh, you all, the residents, mayor and council, to actually just take this journey with us, um, as the city tries to explore, uh, ways to be more environmentally friendly. It does help taxpayers, um, in the long run. Also too, on Saturday, we partnered with Renaissance Church of Christ, where we had our District Two Bookbag Giveaway, um, that was extremely successful and we had a really good time. Uh, we also had our Bulk Trash Day at Merck Miles as well. Um, we had a lot of residents and we were there to, um, greet them. And the reason why, uh, Councilman Sebastian cannot find people dumping, because I am chasing them all the way to District Four. So it's just, you owe me some gas money, okay? Just a little bit. But, um, we had, as Councilwoman Willis mentioned, we had a really good, um, showing at our opening of Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Um, it, it was a really good time and it was great to see when you turned around and looked at all the people on the grass. It was a great feeling to see everybody back. Um, I got a chance to really have a good time, uh, with my colleagues. We will be having more concerts as well, um, coming up August the eighteenth and nineteenth. So if you are, um, looking to come out and have a good time, and I'm pretty sure council will be there, um, you can come party with us and have a good time at Wolf Creek Amphitheater. I do want to give a special recognition to our City of South Fulton Police Department. As you all know, this has, um, been a really, really, um, busy week for them. And, uh, especially with the incident of the young lady that was missing. I think our police officers handled that under the leadership of, uh, Chief Meadows and his staff with the utmost professionalism, um, keeping it really, um, professional under wraps. And I appreciate that, so it didn't become a media frenzy. So, um, I just want to give you kudos, Chief. Your, your staff is doing an excellent job. And then also too, even with the, um, the intersection, the, the fatality at Button and Camp Creek, I think you all handled that with such, you know, professionalism and I thank you greatly. So again, um, just wondering everybody if you have any other questions. I don't know what events are coming up. Brandon is out of town, so I, I, I don't know. But I, I just look forward to the things that we have going on in the city and moving forward, um, under Ms. Subodan's leadership. So I appreciate you all and staff. Um, it's been a heavy lift this week, so. I think that's all I have. Um, did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, Councilwoman Gomes, you do have a question from District Four.
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, since you opened the floor, I did take a lot of the garbage from District Two.
You did.
So that's why I had to text you and tell the people to keep their garbage in District Two. But anyhow, that's not the question. Uh, what are we gonna wager on the Westlake Crease Side Game? Coming up in two days, because I have my shirt already, so.
You do?
I'll be there in the stand and, um, I think we can wager dinner on that one.
How much money you got?
I'm just saying.
We went to Lake.
And I'm just telling you, Rais on the River is one of my favorite restaurants, it's a quick side win. Dinner for two for me and my wife there.
Wow. I might can't help you. I will see.
All right, uh, District One, Councilwoman Dr. Rowe.
Uh, I want to say a special thanks to Goshe Hawkins for partnering with me for the District One Back to School Bookbag Distribution. We gave about, um, four hundred and fifty bookbags to students at A Phila Randolph in Sandtown and, uh, the smiles on their faces made my day. Um, special thanks to Public Works on, uh, tree removals and illegal dumping. Um, it's been a lot going on lately, lately. Thank you for your responsiveness on that. And, um, special, uh, kudos to some residents. So I want to say thank you to Juanita Marbury, Jende Brandon Seo, and Antoinette Clanton. Uh, they've been working. They've stepped up to be neighborhood champions for their, uh, community and they've been working really diligently on their sewer project, Extend to Ten Streets in the Bolt Rock area. Uh, job well done, um, keep up the great work. Um, that's really what citizen engagement should look like, to be focused on being the change you want to see in your community. So thank you again for your efforts. And then to the Hillen Community Center, uh, for those who don't know, um, at thirty-nine fifteen Cascade, we have a community health center. They had a, uh, their first annual health fair on this past Friday. Um, I was able to participate and we are able to get, um, uh, bookbags out. So again, if you're looking for medical providers, we hear a lot about that. That is a new resource in our community. Well, they've been there about a year now. So if you're looking for, um, providers, they're there. As well as the first phase at a Grady Health outpatient clinic opened up on last Monday, um, in the Kroger Plaza right inside I two eighty-five. So we do have some new health options in town, so just wanted to share that information. And, um, I guess that wraps it up, um, with one special thanks to Martha Anderson, who has been working really diligently on overseeing the renovations at the Sandtown Rec Center. Stay tuned. I look forward to the grand opening in September or thereabout, but, um, thank you for your hard work on that.
All right. Uh, I got a couple of things to go through. First, congratulations to my colleagues on council and our staff for pulling off bookbag giveaways in every district across our city. Thank you all for that, that hard work. I do, I'm gonna amplify a couple of things that I've heard. The first is I want to, um, wish a farewell and good luck to, uh, Facilities Manager Martha Anderson and our award-winning Code Enforcement Director, uh, Mr. Brian Moore. He actually will be here through the rest of the week, so if you see him, give him a salute. But, uh, thank you both for all of the work that you did here in our city and I wish you both the best in all of your future endeavors. Um, next, I, uh, want to congratulate, uh, South Fulton's own and Westlake graduate, uh, Christopher Eubanks, who was the highest ranking tennis player at Wimbledon this year, uh, and then competed at our Atlanta Open about two weeks ago. I got to, uh, celebrate with him and his father there. And he will be competing again, uh, August, uh, at the US Open, which begins August twenty-eighth. So set your DVRs, uh, to see South Fulton's finest tennis player, uh, show how amazing we are. Um, I want to thank, well, for those of you who, who I, I did not announce, but I was, I was on mine. I do take an annual, uh, summer and winter sabbatical and I was on mine, uh, for the past ten days. I want to give a special thanks to everyone, um, who made that possible. Uh, with a special thanks to Harmony House Jamaica, which is a retreat for artists and intellectuals and revolutionaries. Uh, it was an amazing time. While I was there, I did some reading. Those of you who follow me on so- uh, social media may have seen my summer sabbatical reading list. Uh, we're gonna be discussing some of these books with the authors, uh, starting first, uh, with this book, uh, Black on Black by, uh, Atlanta University Center African American Studies Professor, Dr. Daniel Black. So you want to pick this book up, uh, we're going to have, uh, he starts a very courageous conversation that we are going to be continuing soon. So, uh, follow me on social media to get that full list at Khalid Cares USA. I'm on all the things. Uh, Facebook, TikTok, uh, just got an account on, what is it, uh, Blue Sky, Mastodon, all the places. And you can text the word Fulton, F U L T O N, two three three seven 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 to sign up for my newsletter and alerts on this and other events. I'm gonna direct your attention to the screen for these last two events that are coming up. We have that serious He-Man Ball. Uh, I have to pull up the, uh, I have to pull up my Instagram. Uh, the tickets are on sale. It is an incredible groundbreaking work, uh, that Jew Colors Theater is bringing back as part of its twentieth anniversary, uh, season. Um, and I'm very proud, uh, of, of the work that is being done as well as the three leading actors who are all tri-Cities high school graduates. Uh, Mr. Enoch King, Mr. Eugene Russell the Third, and the Fourth, I'm the Fifth. And, uh, uh, I'm, uh, and Mr. Neil Gant. So please check that out at our, uh, world famous Southwest Art Center. And last, but not least, August twenty-fourth. August twenty-fourth is the third birthday for our city's first dog, uh, Zion. You can follow him on Instagram at Zion Sun, S-U-N underscore. And Park and Paws in a, uh, in connection with our Parks Department, they have an annual party every fourth Saturday. And so, this Saturday, August twenty-sixth, Zion is buying shots for all of the ladies and all of the, all of the gents that come. We have pet wine and doggy beer. It is non-alcoholic. But, uh, come do a shot and celebrate the first dog. Uh, bring out your, your, uh, fur babies and we'll have a good time, uh, at this amazing event. It is at K-9 Crossing Park in District Three, the place to be. Four nine five one, Camp Drive, three zero three four nine. Uh, you can find out about all of these events and more again by texting the word Fulton to three three seven 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 or following us on social media at COSFGA or online at cityofsouthfulton.gav. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, coming out tonight and being a part of this meeting that we are wrapping up in record time. South Fulton, forever. Okay. We got you. Zion's, Zion's, Zee's got you. All right. And with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
We have to do executive session.
Or go into executive session.
Yes.
Yes, we have to.
Yeah. I move that we do executive, we have executive session, I mean, we recessed to executive session for real estate, personnel and litigation.
And cybersecurity.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second? Been properly moved and seconded. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Oh, it's, I was told it's four now, cybersecurity.
GMA trend.
Okay.
Personnel, litigation, real estate and cybersecurity.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, you got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead. Please call the vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn, to recess for executive session. Councilman Rowe.
Yes.
Councilman Gomes.
Yes.
Councilman Willis.
Yes.
Councilman Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilman Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown. Councilman Pritchett.
Yes.
We are recessed at six oh five PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, don't forget, this Friday, Burt at Jim, the Cal County versus our champions, eight o'clock PM, Burt at.
Okay, we, we are back. If I, I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we, it has been moved and properly seconded that we reconvene. Can we do this by a show of hands?
Record that is unanimous. We are reconvened at seven fifty-four PM.
Mr. Clerk, were there any items from executive session that require a public vote?
Yes, I believe there's one item, uh, that Councilman Rowe will, will offer.
Councilwoman Rowe.
As it relates to Mark Magleray's request to have a hearing under the city's healthy workplace ordinance process, their request is untimely and denied. He should continue under the city's personnel policy before the previously selected hearing officer.
Is there a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that we refer the matter to, through the appropriate channels. Are we ready for the question? Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Councilman Rowe.
Yes.
Councilman Gomes.
Yes.
Councilman Willis.
Yes.
Councilman Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilman Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously?
I move that we, oh, God, that we adjourn.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn the work session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Are we ready for the question? Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn. Councilman Rowe.
Yes.
Councilman Gomes. Councilmember Willis. Councilman Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilman Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Pritchett.
Yes.
We are adjourned at seven fifty-five PM.
Thank you. I will, I will now entertain a motion to convene the work, to convene the alcohol and zoning hearing.
You can just call to order and.
Oh, okay. Then I will call to order the alcohol and zoning hearing.
This is a roll call for the alcohol zoning public hearing. The Honorable Captain F. Rowe, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Captain Carmen Lita Gomes, District Two.
Yes.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Yes.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Count to four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Yes.
And the Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you have a call.
Thank you. Do, do we have any business for alcohol or zoning?
Yes, we have four, uh, public hearings. Um, all four items have been requested for deferral. Believe per the advice of the Assistant City Attorney, uh, one motion would be in order to defer all four items.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I will entertain a motion to defer all four items.
And let me, uh, let me just state them for the record. Uh, Z twenty-three zero zero seven, CV twenty-three zero zero two. This is regarding a property on Old National Highway in Carrollburg Terrace. U twenty-three dash zero zero seven, this is a short-term rental on seventy-two forty Hopgood Road. U twenty-three zero zero eight, this is a short-term rental for fifty-seven, seventy-five Dotson Road. And U twenty-three zero zero nine, this is a short-term rental for thirty-six sixty U Toy Drive, Atlanta.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I will entertain a motion to defer all four hearings.
I move that we defer all four items, um, as stated by our city clerk.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we defer all four items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Are we ready for the question? Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Councilman Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian. Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That those items were approved seven zero to defer.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Are we ready for the question? Can we do this by a show of hands?
I record that as unanimous. We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. And we'd like to remind the public that we have our first village rate public hearing tomorrow at six PM at Southwest Arts Center. Thank you. Have a good evening.